Okay, your worship, I think we're ready to go here with the WeStream feed and feel free to call the meeting to order.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, and just a couple of housekeeping items for everybody here. So just a reminder, now that we are actually in chambers for a number of us, make sure that your electronic devices are turned off or to vibrate, if you would do that, please. Reminder, your microphone, you'll have to push your mic button before you speak so that everybody can pick you up. If not, KJ will yell out from the back room and he'll remind you to turn your microphone on. And we're going to be ready to get started. So for all the viewers at home, welcome to the council meeting of Tuesday, July the 13th. We're starting in the afternoon, this is our summertime that we're able to start earlier, which works out better for all of us. So first order of business is the playing of Oh, Canada. So today's recording, and we will be using this recording, we will be... What are we picking up there, Mr.? You got him? Okay, thank you for that. So the Oh, Canada version, the pre-recorded version that we're going to be playing today is the same one you'll hear again in August. Today's performance features a number of Niagara Falls artists. This started as a creative Zoom call and it evolved into something special. It features layering of a number of talented performers. In order of appearance in the video, the Niagara artists featured are Ashley Standish, Eve Adams, Big John T. Bone Little, Rafiq Gergis, Valerie Borgesi, Steve Burnside, and Maria Vettier. So kudos to the musicians for their creativity and for sharing their talent with all of us here today. So folks, we're going to start with the Oh, Canada, and if you'd like to stand or whatever it is that you do, depending on where you are. Thank you.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land.
True patriot love in all of us command.
With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free.
From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
God keep our land, glorious and free.
Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
We could do a council version of Oh, Canada, what do you think? Vids? All right, moving along, thank you very much, that was terrific. Thank you to all of our performers for doing that rendition of Oh, Canada for us today. Next order of business is approval of the minutes from our June 22nd, 2021 meeting. Motion by Counselor Strange, second by Counselor Peter Angelo, all those in favor. Okay, and that's approved, thank you for that. Disclosures of a peculiar interest, do we have any disclosures, Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, 7.1 PBD 2021-36 Employment Lands, I have family that owns property there, and 8.4 CD 2021-02 Fee Waiver Application, and 8.5 PBD 2021-33 Downtown BIA.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, your worship, same conflict on the first one, PD 2021-36, family owns land in the area.
Okay, thank you for that, any other disclosures of counsel? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a very brief version of the mayor's announcements. They're always brief, this is really brief, it's one page today, it'll be very brief, very short. I know you're disappointed, but that's all I have, I'm sorry. First off, under obituaries, we want to pass along our condolences on the loss of Rosemary Puttich, the wife of Norm Puttich, a former longtime city councillor here in the city of Niagara Falls. Our condolences to the Puttich family. I'd like to thank Counselor Peter Angelo for joining me at La Paisana Latin Grocery Store opening. We had that a couple of weeks ago, terrific on St. Paul Street, what a neat place, where you can buy all sorts of different kinds of Latin foods, and amazing mural on the wall, if you get a chance to check that in, it's right near the Hollage Trail, really cool place. Buddy and Mike, so there's a local duo, for anyone that's familiar with social media and you've been following along, Mike Lawlessich and his King Shepard Buddy, so better known as Buddy and Mike, of course they put Buddy's name first. They're taking the internet by storm, Buddy and Mike have hundreds of thousands of followers on social media channels. Actually, between all of them, I think it's close to a million followers, and they've got millions of hits all across social media from all over the world. Their following has exploded, and especially during this pandemic. And they've been sharing positivity, good stories, promoting major events, and having fun ever since. It's only natural that they've taken on the role, and they're really serious about this, they want to help Niagara Falls with its COVID recovery, and they've become COVID recovery ambassadors for Niagara Falls. So if you will, we'd like to draw your attention to the screen, a brief video that we have.
Buddy, me and you guys, Niagara Falls, get back on their feet again, Buddy want to help them? Tell me, tell me, good boy, hey, you want to be mayor? Buddy wants to be mayor in Niagara Falls? What do you think, tell me? I got a better idea, hey, hey, say it, I got a better idea. How about we be official COVID recovery ambassadors? Buddy wants to do that? Buddy wants to be an official recovery ambassador? Buddy wants to be official COVID recovery ambassador? Tell me.
So they just, on a minute's notice, one take, they got it done. Pardon me? Deputy, he asked if I could, I asked if I could be his deputy. And Buddy did it in one take, it took me about three takes, but that's okay. That's what I'm saying, I'm really concerned. So I'm asking for counsel, a motion of counsel, if we could make Buddy and Mike our official COVID recovery ambassadors for Niagara Falls. Motion by Counselor Strange, second by Counselor Peter Angelo. If there's any discussion to that, let's call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for that. They were really excited, and all they want to do is help Niagara Falls get back on its feet again. And they're just going around the city doing videos, they did one for Alzheimer's, to promote fundraiser for Alzheimer's, they're doing all sorts of things, just to promote Niagara Falls, to bring people back, so a lot of fun. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, August the 10th. So let me just move along here one second. Okay, we move on to deputations and presentations, and our first item is a Chippewa Creek rescue. So I just want to confirm with our IT people that, do we have our people? Oh, there they are, they're on the screen, sorry, let me get used to it, okay? Hello, everybody, I don't know where you're looking, but if you could see us, okay? We've got Kelly Crossley and Adam Waderchik, hopefully I got that right? Pretty close? Okay, you're muted, maybe it's good that you're muted. You can't make fun of the way I said it.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah. Was I close, Waderchik?
Pretty close.
Okay, I'll take close. Okay, so now, we're going to get an echo, right? Do you want to mute that again? Okay, so Kelly Crossley and Adam Waderchik. I'm pleased to invite Kelly and Adam here today, on the screen, virtually, to share their story and to honor their heroic actions. During a weekend float in the Chippewa Creek, and anyone who lives in Niagara Falls knows, locally it's known as the Creek, well, that part of the Relent River, they noticed a man who was drowning, and they jumped in to action to save him. And this is a classic example of Niagara Falls people doing the right thing. Kelly was shouting for help, and she garnered the assistance, and as needed, and Adam brought this man to safety. We want to thank both Adam and Kelly for not thinking twice and for taking quick action to save a life. Since this incident, there's also been another tragic death in this area. Incidents like these remind us of the power of the water and that we have to have respect for the water and for the currents in that water, how important it is to have water safety and respect. Thanks to Kelly's requests, we've implemented new safety training and equipment for our volunteers and our monitors at the river. At this point, I'd like to virtually present, we've got a gift here for Adam, and it's a Love Niagara Falls gift for Kelly, and we're going to get these gifts to you, obviously not today, but we'll get these delivered to you. They're a small token of our thanks for all that you did and how you risked your own life to make Niagara Falls a better place, to make it a safer place, and how grateful we are for people like you, and as a counsel, we wanted to acknowledge you. So please join in and let's thank our friends here. I'd like to maybe first start, I'm going to ask Counselor Strange, who brought this to our attention, and then we're going to ask you if you'd like to say a few words to Adam and to Kelly. So Counselor Strange?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I just want to thank Kelly and Adam for their fast thinking, you know what I mean? Everyone can say, oh, I would have did the same if I was in that same situation, but you really don't, just like the two gentlemen a few weeks ago, when they, you know, the one guy rescued the other man in the car that was on fire, and one person passed away and the other one saved a life, but we don't know until that moment in time. And I've known Kelly for a long time, she's got a big heart and she does a lot for charities, including care for kids. I don't know Adam, but because you're swimming, I guess, a strong swimmer, I imagine that you guys got together and with Kelly's awareness now of what we need down there, we're putting up proper signage, and there was a tragedy, I think just a week after, when they saved this guy's life, a tragedy happened. So if we can stop these from happening because of the awareness that these two brought to counsel, and so I just want to thank you on behalf of counsel for helping save this gentleman's life, and you know, you don't know if you weren't in that specific time and spot, if he would have survived. So thank you so much, and thank you for bringing the awareness to us.
Thank you very much, Counselor Strange. Now I'd like to ask if Kelly and Adam, if you could want to unmute your mic and if you'd like to maybe just share with us your thoughts on the day. You're muted. There you go, you're good now.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't really have a lot to say, to me, it's just what you do, and yeah, and thank you so much for recognizing it.
Yeah, thank you.
That's it? Yeah, give us a little bit of the story if you would.
We were floating in Chippewa, and I went back to the car that was parked on Willoughby, because it was so busy that day. And I was grabbing more water from the car, and I seen this gentleman float bouncing up and down in the water. So I ran through the grass, through the parking lot, grabbed the man, and the parking lot attendant, when we pulled him out, asked if we'd like to call 911. That should have been his first response, instead of waiting until after I took the gentleman out of the water.
That's what we're setting, there was no strategic plan in place for when this does happen.
And you're exactly right, and that's why what we did was, because of that, because of our discussion, and I'm trying to look into the camera here, and because of that... trying to look into the camera here, and because of that discussion, our ambassadors, who are just put there to help with traffic control in the parking lot with the boats and the cars, have since, are now going to be receiving more training. And you're right, the first thing, call 911. That's the very first thing. And, and there's a number of things because of that incident that we're going to be doing now so that it'll be safer for the next situation. So the main thing is that we learn from each one of these situations, and we're grateful that you were there to save this individual so it did not end tragically. And now with some of these new measures that we're implementing, hopefully, it'll be what we need to do to prevent something else from happening in a similar situation if they don't have somebody like you nearby to drag them out. So just on behalf, Kelly and Adam, on behalf of the city, I just want to say thank you. We're all really grateful that you're willing to do what you did. And Counselor Strange is exactly right. Some people would freeze and panic and not do that. Some people maybe can't swim, or they can't swim strong enough, because oftentimes, the drowning person will drown their rescuer. So you've got to be strong, and in that current, which is strong too, you got to be careful. You have to know what you're doing. And the fact that it ended the way it did, we're really grateful. It's just our small way of saying, thank you, and we wanted to recognize you for what you did that day. It definitely saved a tragedy, and it allowed us to have some good lessons going forward that we're implementing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for recognizing.
Counsel, I've got Counselor Campbell. Yes, Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. I'm so proud of Kelly. She's on the BIA in Niagara Falls downtown. She's doing a wonderful job. But interestingly enough, a couple of weeks ago, she approached me about safety around the dock. And apparently, there is downstream, maybe 25 yards, there's a sandbox that I think that the city should be looking at, and that is where they can have the swimming area in the creek with ropes and safety equipment. So congratulations, Kelly. I really am proud of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
All right, thank you. Oh, yes, Counselor Dubrowski.
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to bring this up during new business. Congratulations to Kelly and Adam. We also lost, I'm not sure if this is the time to bring it up, or maybe I wait until after, but either way, I want to congratulate Kelly and Adam. There's kind of a prelude to, to a motion I want to bring up later. Yeah, the waters are treacherous. They're, they're unassuming as well. But to Counselor Campbell's point, I think my motion that I'll bring up later fits nicely and can prevent future incidents and potential deaths. But kudos to, to the both of you and your tenacity for, for preventing a possible situation that could have turned ugly that thankfully didn't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so folks, thank you. Grateful to you, and we'll get these goodies off to you. Thank you. Okay, I'm not sure what we got on the screen there right now. And I've got one more item. Okay? And for presentation, so, oh, I see the hand, oh, the handout. I see what you're doing. Okay. So that handout is part of, I'm sorry, you put that up there? Was that you, Sean? Or was that Heather?
Yeah.
Okay. This is so confusing now. The screen's over there, the camera's over here. You got to look in the right direction. I'm trying to figure. And there you'll see the Chippewa Boat Ramp Parking Alternatives. So this is for counsel's information. We were having problems down there because of COVID, people not working, not going to school, and then they opened up the docks. It was crazy down there. So we put ambassadors down in the parking lot to help with parking and let people know where they could go. And there's additional parking opportunities, as you can see. There's the arena, there's another launch, there's, there's a few places that you can go other than the main boat launch area. So we've now added extra training for ambassadors, so if something does happen down there, they'll know what to do. Because we don't necessarily want the ambassador jumping in the water. We want them to calling the police and calling 911 and making sure that the right people are on site. So we wanted to mention that. And while we're on this topic, we've got one more thing that we'd like to honor, and there is one sad part to this. Jalen Craig, and you might have read about this in the paper. Before we move on, I want to take a moment to honor the young man who recently drowned, and I think this is where Counselor Dubrowski was going. He drowned in the Chippewa Creek. Seventeen-year-old Jalen Craig recently lost his life in the water on June the 27th, and our thoughts go out to the Jalen family. And as a tribute to him, his family is committed to doing something in his memory. And I, and I went and I visited with the family at their house, and they're very sad. They lost their son, and they said, what next? You know, how do we stop this? And they're a beautiful family. And how do we stop this from happening again? And what's the city going to do? And, and, oh, they had so many. My heart just broke for this family because they had a lot of questions, and of course, I don't have all the answers. You know, and they talked about people jumping off the bridge, and they talked about everything. They're, they're very, they're very sad. So anyway, they, they want to see something that honors them, that also serves to raise awareness about water safety and for those swimming in Chippewa. So we're hoping that, well, a couple of things, but one is if we could get a motion of counsel to place a memorial bench with a message that serves as a reminder of Jalen's life, and also that shares awareness of the respect for the water and the current and the water safety in that area. So we got a motion from Counselor Strange, second from Counselor Lukoko. Do we have any discussion to this motion, or did we want to talk about anything else around this topic before I call the vote? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay? And that's unanimous. Thank you for that. And I would just, as I understand it, and I know Mr. Nicol is on the line, our Director of Municipal Works, and last week was our acting CAO, and we had a discussion around some things that we could do in that area regarding float devices and signage and whatnot. I just wondered if we could just ask Mr. Nicol if he could just maybe give us an update on what the city's going to be doing as a result of these two incidents that we've learned of.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, it's definitely a tragic situation that we hope we can help work with everyone out there to help things get better in the future. What we've done is taken some immediate steps, as was mentioned, to give more information to our ambassadors. Our ambassadors are our school crossing guards, so they're not lifeguards, and we don't expect them to act like a lifeguard, but we know that they can help in an emergency. And if they're trained and they have the basics to understand who to call and how to deal with the situation, that we know that potentially we could get help to the site faster. So these are, on the screen in front of you is a handout that's on the backside of the location map that was previously shown. Hopefully, we, this is a message that those who come and enjoy our park can see, they can take note that they need to take some of these safety matters into their own hands. We only have responsibility for a fraction of the canal of the Welland River, sorry. And so we want to try to take advantage of that when people are coming to our park. We're also investigating some lifesaving devices through the OPG, who manage the waterway. With our partnership with OPG and our Fire and Emergency Services, we're reaching out to try to make some connections to see if we can get some life rings placed strategically along the banks of the Chippewa Creek, along with some signage. And there's fast currents out there. They're unusual currents, and they can change depending on the actions of the power generating stations. So we want everyone to be aware before they enter the water that it's a risky business. And if they are entering and there is a tragedy, that we can at least have some level of additional measures along the banks to help prevent these from happening in the future. We also want to be mindful that the St. John Ambulance does do daily patrols, and they are out there saving people's lives. Their, their main goal is prevention, but they have a long history of saving lives in the Chippewa Creek. So we can't go without mentioning the great help that St. John Ambulance and many of our Fire and Emergency Services staff were involved with that endeavor are participating on. So thanks, Mr. Mayor, for that opportunity.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Nicol. So do we have any questions or comments of counsel at this time? Yes, Counselor Dubrowski?
Yeah, through you to, to Mr. Nicol. This is great. So I, I had a motion I wanted to bring up later, but it seems like everything's in motion. I'm a resident of Chippewa. I drove, drive over that Main Street Bridge at least 10 times a day. And just last week, there was two young children. They couldn't have been more than eight years old, one with a life preserver on, the other not. No parents around, and they could have been tourists. I don't know if they were local, but the parents could have stopped at Tim Hortons, grabbed the coffee on the picnic table, and let their kids kind of go for, for a jump in the water. So I love what, what we're proposing here. What I would like to add is, and I love the signage, but using words like undertow, swift currents, danger, just making sure that people who aren't from around here, I mean, us as locals, it's almost a rite of passage if you're a Chippewanian. If you haven't jumped in the Chippewa River and gone for a swim with a noodle, you're not a Chippewanian. So I, you know, we don't want to take the fun out of anything, but at the same time, we do want to encourage and educate people about the potential dangers of the water. So just including a little more info on the signage about the waters, there's an undertow. That water can look like glass. It looks so unassuming, but once you jump in, I mean, I've jumped in that water before, and I didn't have a noodle, and I was lucky, and I'm not the strongest of swimmer, but even if you're a strong swimmer, it, it's, it's tough water to navigate on the, on the best of days. So, no, I love what we're proposing here. I'm in full support of it. Again, just some more explanation on the signage. A couple of words is great, but, you know, paragraphs talking about the dangers, again, if you're local, you're probably aware of it. But for the tourists that come to Kingsbridge Park that stop in at Tim Hortons, the more that we can offer up in terms of education about what the waters actually entail, I think would be beneficial. But either way, kudos to everybody involved. I love it, and I think it's long overdue, and looking forward to seeing the next steps. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Counselor Dubrowski. And just to Mr. Nicol, do we, so, so just so for clarity, and for the people watching and for the media tuning in, so we're going to enhance the, some of the, so you've shared us the flyer that we're giving out, extra training with our ambassadors. We're going to put up some more signage and more flotation devices. Is that right? That's what the plan is? Just to be clear.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We've also taken to social media for some additional outreach to get the word out there.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Dubrowski?
And to that point, through, through you to Mr. Nicol, great to hear about the social media campaign. I'm thinking, you know, maybe March, April of next year, if we could really hit the ground running with, with an awareness campaign, encouraging people, obviously, not encouraging them to necessarily swim in the water, but just to make sure that they're mindful of as, you know, the weather gets warmer, as people tend to jump in that water, just so it's at the top of mind.
Great idea. Great initiative.
Thank you for that. Counselor Carrio?
Thank you, your worship. I just was hoping that we would also include not the area just around the ramps, but there's a lot of other areas along that stretch where people enter the water. So I'm assuming we get enough signage so that we would make sure that we put them in almost everywhere where people seem to enter the water.
Okay, so we'll get, just clarify that with Mr. Nicol.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. We're, we're looking at signage on areas that the city is not licensing or owning. We'll do work with the OPG. I can't imagine them being unwilling to help with the placement of signage in those locations. In fact, they do a lot of signage around dams and other hydroelectric stations as well. So I think we've got a great partner with OPG. We can definitely work with them on some signage. And yeah, the intention is to, to put signage on those frequent spots where folks are entering and exiting the creek.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Really appreciate all the work you're doing, Mr. Nicol, and making sure that we keep our places safe. Okay, so we will move on to the next part of our agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk.
I've just been notified that we are having a bit of technical difficulties with the WeStream feed, and suggest if we could just pause for a few moments until that's sorted out.
Sure. Okay. So none of that that we did got on?
It's intermittent.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we're going to take a little bit of a pause for a few minutes?
Maybe, maybe thank Kelly again and wish her well.
Okay. Okay, folks, we are back. Welcome to our council meeting again of Tuesday, July the 13th. We had some technical difficulties. We've now resolved them. So for anyone that's been following along, we lost maybe about 10 minutes in the middle of this meeting. This will be reposted tomorrow on the city's YouTube channel, so you can pick up that little piece that you missed, or you can watch the whole thing right from the beginning. So for anybody following along, we are going to resume the meeting now. We are now at the planning portion of our council meeting, after having finished doing our mayor's reports and our deputations and discussions around the Chippewa Creek. So moving along, I would now ask our city clerk if he would introduce the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, conflict, I guess I'll be leaving.
Okay, conflict by Counselor Lukoko. And Counselor Peter Angelo as well? Okay, so you guys are good?
A public meeting is now being convened to receive comments of the public and refer to staff to be addressed in the preparation of official plan and zoning bylaw amendments that implements the employment land strategy. As part of the consultation process, the notice of public open house and statutory public meeting was placed in the Niagara Falls Review on the city's webpage and was mailed out to all property owners impacted by the amendment on June 18th, 2021.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. I now ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hrlavich, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report will be presented by the consultants who prepared our employment land strategy for the city. The purpose behind this study was a compliance issue with the Provincial Growth Plan and the region's official plan. So it's intended to be examining what our future land use needs will be with respect to ensuring that we have sufficient jobs to meet the 2051 projected timeframe set by the province, and to ensure that we have sufficient land area to ensure that we have space to accommodate all of the jobs that are projected. And rather than me go on about this, we will have the consultants present. I would outline to you that counsel is not being asked to make a decision tonight. We're actually bas, basically asking that you receive the comments that have been submitted both in writing and orally, as you will hear this afternoon, and that we receive those and that staff be directed to refine the official plan and zoning amendments that are attached to tonight's report. So basically, it's an opportunity to meet the Planning Act requirements for the statutory meeting, receive comments, refer that back to staff so that we can address any of the concerns that counsel hears this evening. And the final documents would be presented to counsel later this fall. And I will allow then the consultants to be allowed to speak and make their presentation.
That's great. Thank you very much, Mr. Hrlavich.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Presentation here, and if I could ask the clerk kindly, Jamie Cook from our office, it doesn't look like he's been given access to these, if you could take a look at that. But thank you, everyone, for being here today. Myself and Kelly Martel from Dillane Consultant will be giving a presentation today on the employment land strategy, and I will, I'll kick things off today. So first and foremost, we have So, first and foremost, we have, sorry, we were retained in the winter of 2020 alongside Dillon Consulting and MDP Insight to conduct this employment land strategy for the city. This employment land strategy contributes to long-term provision and planning policy framework for the city to enhance its competitive position for industrial and office employment, which typically accommodated unemployment areas. This study provides a long-term land needs analysis, public and stakeholder engagement, policy and strategic recommendations, as well as draft official plan and zoning bylaw amendments. It's broken into three phases. We are now in phase three of our study. And following this presentation and the feedback we receive, we'll be generating a phase three report to build on the work that's previously been conducted. So, the purpose of this presentation is to provide members of the public with the findings of our technical analysis as it relates to phase one and two, as well as some work that's been done thus far for phase three, as well as the draft proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendments. So, this slide here just simply speaks to the context in which the study is being conducted. So, first and foremost, this is within the provincial policy framework from the PPS 2020, as you can see on the very left there, as well as a place to grow, which is the prescriptive planning document for the Greater Golden Horseshoe. Together, these two documents are important, provide the framework for our study and provide direction regarding long-term land needs, economic development, competitiveness, and the protection of employment areas. So, for example, the growth plan allows municipalities to designate employment areas based on identified land needs to the year 2051. And it also does provide the planning authorities, which is in this case the Niagara Region, with the ability to permit the conversion of lands within employment areas to non-employment uses through a comprehensive review, where it has been demonstrated that the lands are not required for employment purposes over the long term, and there is a need for conversion. So, quickly here, I'm just going to go over the supply, the employment supply within the city. So, currently, there are 1,100 hectares of employment land throughout the municipality. And just over half of those are accommodated outside of the city's employment areas, which are highlighted in pink there in the image. And when we look to the vacant land supply that's actually developable and still remaining, the city's supply is shrinking. It's at approximately 60 hectares, which represents 5% of that total supply. And when we take a closer look at that vacant supply broken down by employment area, we can see that the North Niagara Falls Secure Storage Employment Area does account for a majority of the vacant land that remains in the city with 43 hectares. And this graph further breaks down that vacant supply by shovel-ready and serviceable status. The Secure Storage Employment Area does have a significant supply of shovel-ready land. And shovel-ready in this case is defined as employment lands which butt an arterial, collector, or local road, and furthermore have sanitary, water, and storm stuff at the property line. And I just briefly want to speak about the city's target sectors, which we have identified through this study. I would just have a few on the screen here. So, first and foremost is advanced manufacturing. Now, this is and will continue to be accommodated within the city. Employment areas such as Stanley Avenue Business Park facilitate such uses. And for this industry, highway access is critical, as well as large parcel sizes, which can accommodate business expansion as developments continue to grow. Construction is, of course, another important sector for the city. This can be supported on a wider range of parcels. And unlike advanced manufacturing, highway access typically isn't as important as is access to the customer base. And for the three remaining sectors here, you have your research and development, corporate and government office, as well, and professional scientific and technical services. So, these don't require overly large parcels, and they're typically associated with a campus-like setting, which means that there's amenities close by, there's access to transit, walkable environments. And facilitating these uses is becoming increasingly important for things such as youth retention and maintaining a skilled labor force within the city. So, the medical research business park that's being discussed next to the new hospital would be the first of its kind for this city and would support such employment. So, I briefly just want to provide a profile of the city's employment areas with largely focusing on the North Niagara Falls Secure Storage Employment Area. So, this employment area is quite diverse with no discernible industry concentration. It does have the largest supply of vacant land remaining in the city. However, the age of this employment area and the amount of land that's still available does speak to the lack of demand that we've historically seen here. And this can be attributed to several reasons, such as expensive land costs, no direct access to the QEW, and residential encroachment. So, many trucking industries and logistics operations don't want to be traveling through residential neighborhoods to access their business and customer base. So, and there is residential encroachment pushing upon the boundaries of this employment area. And many of the parcels identified for employment are quite fragmented and can lead to difficulty in development. So, while there is vacant land, we definitely have to be mindful of the historical difficulties of vacant land absorption in this area and not overstate the city's vacant supply. And here, we just have a simply a summary of the six remaining employment area sites. And as I mentioned, vacant land opportunities here are quite minimal. So, future planning efforts should focus on promoting expansion and intensification where possible. This is difficult, however, because expansion opportunities are largely due to the discretion of business owners. And when we look forward to the employment forecast and land demand for the city to 2051, we first have to determine what we forecast the total employment to be by 2051. So, as you can see here on the right, we've, we're expecting approximately 59,000 jobs within the city by 2051. And this forecast does work within the framework of the growth plan, which I spoke to earlier, which does allocate growth for the Niagara Region and across the Greater Golden Horseshoe. So, this number of 59,000 does represent approximately 17,000 new jobs over the 2016 to 2051 planning horizon. And for the purpose of this study, we're most concerned with how that employment falls on the ground and how much of that falls within employment areas. So, as you can see here, we've taken a look at that and determined or forecast that approximately 3,000 of these jobs over the next 2020 to 2051 period will be accommodated within employment areas, which does represent approximately 17% of the total employment. So, when we put this all together, you have your employment land demand. You take the employment supply, and that generates the employment area land need. And we are planning for a density of 25 jobs per hectare to determine what that job to land need is. So, the initial technical results of this study indicate that the city will experience a shortfall of employment land within the next 20 years. And as a part of its OP review, the city should explore lands for future employment area designation to ensure long-term employment demand forecast can be accommodated. And I'll speak to that in just a moment. So, here, just reiterating the supply across the city's employment areas of 60 hectares. And when we take that demand forecast that I just spoke to, we do have a demand of approximately 108 hectares, which results in a shortfall of 48 hectares by 2051. And we do have to also apply contingency factor for vacant lands that currently exist here, such as those in the Secure Storage Employment Area that likely or potentially could remain vacant by 2051. So, when we apply that contingency, we would estimate that by 2051, the city would currently be 60 hectares short of employment land to accommodate that demand. So, with that being said, the next phase would be to determine where exactly there are opportunities to accommodate that employment growth. So, what we've done as part of the phase three work, and which will be further explored in the phase three report, is locate a preferred option for an employment area, which can accommodate this demand to 2051. So, as you can see, this is an employment area that would be almost 270 hectares large with 140 hectares of developable land. However, as you can see in the brown here, there are many environmental features that would limit development and cause some configuration constraints. So, this 140 is likely a bit high of a number. And furthermore, the star that's indicated here is the region's preferred site for a future water and wastewater treatment facility. And that would, of course, as well, take away from the available land for development. So, those two considerations should be, should be considered as the city continues to explore this area and perhaps conduct a secondary plan to determine the suitability of this site. So, we've determined that this site is the preferred location for several reasons. So, we did conduct an analysis of several sites throughout the city, some of those within the urban boundary and some outside of it. And as a starting point, we determined that there were viable opportunities for development within the urban boundary. So, in saying that, that indicates that an employment area that falls outside of the urban boundary would be a difficult exercise to justify as you would have to prove that there are no viable options for development within the urban boundary. And as shown on the screen here, we would argue that this is a viable option for development, and thus, options outside of the urban boundary are not justifiable at this time. And there are several other reasons why we think this site is a good option for the employment area. So, as you can see, it has immediate access to the QEW interchange, and it's not encumbered by residential encroachment, and there's no residential neighborhoods that would cause any conflict at this time in terms of whether that be logistics or abutting the site. And as you can see, this site does also prevent that from happening in the future for the most part, as to the east, you have Stanley Road, which would act as a future buffer against residential encroachment, the Welland River to the north, and the Montrose Road Industrial Area to the west. All provide great offers looking into the future to prevent any, or to prevent a significant amount of land use compatibility issues. Furthermore, the proximity to the Montrose Road Industrial Area to the west and the Stanley Avenue Business Park to the northeast do provide some nice synergies and allowing the employment to function throughout this area in a cohesive manner. This is also, as mentioned, the preferred location, according to the Niagara Region, of their future water and wastewater treatment facility. And due to the persistent odors that would be a result of this plant, it would cause some potential issues with residential development as there is a 2,000-meter zone of influence, which is being amended through the Class III industrial facility. So, with that, I am going to pass it over to Kelly Martel from Dillon Consulting to speak to the policy recommendations and draft official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment.
Thanks so much, Adam. I just wanted to confirm that everyone can hear me. So, if maybe somebody could nod that I'm audible?
Yep, we can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, so, next slide, please, Adam. So, included within the phase two report for the strategy, which Adam did give a bit of an overview of, the Dillon team provided a number of policy recommendations for consideration to be implemented as part of an official plan amendment and/or zoning bylaw amendment, as the case may be. And I will get into further detail in that in the coming slides. But with respect to the policy recommendations, I would note that a number of key themes did emerge. And first, we included a recommendation that the city's official plan be updated to establish the future vision for the city's employment lands, which is shown on the screen before you today. We've identified the future vision being employment lands within the city of Niagara Falls will provide the city with a diverse collection of parcels, opportunities for greenfield development and intensification of existing sites, and allow the city to competitively respond to market demands and meet the city's employment needs to 2051. Next, we identified a number of areas within the city's existing official plan that require revision to address matters of consistency and conformity with the provincial policy statement, the growth plan, and the regional official plan. And as Adam noted, there have been a number of changes at the provincial level in recent years, being the provincial policy statement is now 2020 version. The growth plan has been updated for 2019 version and then amended again in 2020, as well as the Niagara Region's official plan, which we know is undergoing their municipal comprehensive review process as well right now. Next slide? Yes. Thanks so much, Adam. In terms of employment conversions discussed in the phase two report, the recommendation here is to implement these in policy through amending the appropriate official plan schedules and zoning bylaw where required. And finally, as Adam did note, we identified there would be a need for the city to identify additional employment land to meet the demand to 2051. And I identified those as such in the official plan and zoning bylaw, and that would have been that area Adam discussed previously. Next slide, please. And I'll just go to the next slide and walk you through the proposed official plan amendment. So, in terms of how the policy recommendations are proposed to be operationalized and implemented, I'll discuss this over the next few minutes and go into some detail of the specifics, and then I'll do that for the zoning bylaw as well. As Mr. Hrlavich noted earlier, we are in the public meeting stage, and really, the intent today is to obtain comments and feedback from council and the public. And again, this is not final, and no decision is going to be made today. Following today, we will be taking input and comments received and working through addressing comments as necessary or where applicable and coming forward again in the fall with a recommendation. So, first, I would note that there are six key mapping changes and one word change proposed within the city's land use schedule, otherwise known as Schedule A, and that is what is on the slide before you right now. The wording proposed is a replacement from the term "industrial" on the legend with the word "employment" to reflect consistent terminology with upper-tier plans both at the region and the provincial levels. In terms of the mapping changes, these reflect the recommended conversions as presented in the phase two report, including the identification of the new employment area. Three of the sites are subject to a deferral notation on the map, which reflect elements of change that are subject to regional review and approval either through the municipal comprehensive review process or through the region's review as the approval authority on this amendment. These deferrals relate to the property located generally at McLeod Road and Beechwood Road, the area identified as a proposed addition to the North Niagara Falls Secure Storage Area, employment area, and the identified new employment area located between the QEW, Stanley Avenue, the Welland River, and Rexstinger Road. And each one of those is shown kind of in these insets here on the slide. Next slide, please. Thanks. Okay. So, what we're showing here is the proposed amendment to Schedule A 5 of the official plan. And this would have the effect of redesignating lands located along Bridge Street within the Transit Area Secondary Plan from employment to mixed use 2, which aligns with the recommendations of the phase two report. So, on this slide, the lands in question are shown with a blue hatching and noted as lands to be redesignated from employment to mixed use 2. Next slide, please. Great. So, finally, we have identified a new land use schedule, which we are calling Schedule A 7, and proposing that this be added to the official plan. And the intent of this schedule is to identify the city's designated employment lands, the region's employment area overlay, as well as the Gateway Economic Zone. And these are generally amendments that are required as a result of either provincial conformity or conformity with the upper-tier plans, as well as the, in the provincial system now, through the growth plan, there is a differentiation between employment areas and employment lands that is being captured in this schedule. It is recommended both for clarity purposes and readability, as well as conformity purposes, as I mentioned. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, so there are some text changes as well to the official plan amendment, which deal with minor updates to Section 8 of the official plan. Section 8 of the official plan includes all of the industrial policies. What we have done is gone through these and made minor updates to deal with consistency and conformity issues. In this case, one of the major updates, again, was replacing the term "industrial" with "employment." We have also proposed a general reorganization of this section for readability purposes. Next slide, please, Adam. So with that, I will just take a few minutes and review the zoning bylaw amendments proposed as part of this work. So if, Adam, you want to advance to the next one, we will start with the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the Willoughby bylaw. And what I will say is that currently, the city's the city has a number of different zoning bylaws, and the intent of this amendment is to take the lands that are currently within the Willoughby bylaw and move them into zoning bylaw 79200, which is the city's urban bylaw. So what this does is remove the existing industrial-zoned lands and tourist-commercial zoned lands from the Willoughby bylaw, forming part of this new employment area that Adam spoke to previously, and bring them both into bylaw 79200. And I will note that a large portion of these lands are currently zoned industrial within this bylaw, while the balance are zoned tourist-commercial. And they would be all going into the new bylaw and zoned as prestige industrial. Next slide, please. Thank you so much. So now, what I'll talk about is the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to bylaw 79200. And moving on from the new employment area that I discussed on the previous slide, what happens here is now these lands have been brought into brought into zoning bylaw 79200 from Willoughby bylaw, applying a prestige industrial zone to the lands that would have been zoned industrial and tourist-commercial in that bylaw. And it does obviously take account for the existing environmental features, and none of the environmental zoning is changing as a result of this. And as well, there are three other industrial properties that were recommended and identified for conversion through the Employment Land Strategy Report that are also captured through this amendment. And those are quite difficult to see on this slide, but they are the property, the collective properties located along Bridge Street within the secondary plan area, another property, which is located sort of on that Valley Way area, Adam is pointing towards it, and then one along Beaverdams Road. And I believe if we advance to the next slide, I can speak to these in a larger size. So again, this is the Bridge Street area within the Transit Station Secondary Plan, and what we're proposing is that, consistent with the recommendations to redesignate to mixed-use 2, they be zoned CB4, which is in accordance with the secondary plan zoning. Next slide, please. And then this property here, it would be along Portage Road and Valley Way, and it was picked up and identified through the Phase Two report as appropriate for conversion. And what we are suggesting and recommending is that it be rezoned from light industrial to neighborhood commercial. Next slide. Great, thank you so much. I believe this one is along Beaverdams Road and Keeler Road, and again, similarly to the previous one, it was picked up and recommended for conversion, and we are identifying that it should be rezoned from its current GI zone to a neighborhood commercial zone. Next slide, please. Oh, and again, just for a bigger context here, is the proposed new employment area, and outlined in yellow is the full extent of it, with the areas hatched out in blue that would be identified to be zoned as prestige industrial. Next slide. Oh, conclusions. So I think, Adam, I'm going to pass it back to you.
Great, thanks. So yeah, really quickly here, we have a few conclusions. So first and foremost, the city should strengthen its policies to protect and retain the existing vacant employment land supply to ensure that that future demand on employment lands is not unduly constrained by a lack of market choice throughout its remaining vacant parcels or constrained by any conflicting land uses. And of course, there is a shortfall that's expected by 2051. So this shortfall, accompanied with the difficulty marking the North Niagara Falls Secure Storage Employment Area, will require a new employment area to be developed. And as a part of its official plan review, the city should explore the lands identified in this presentation for a future employment area designation to ensure that the long-term employment land demand forecast can be accommodated. And finally, on next steps with our project, so from here, we will finalize the official plan amendments and zoning bylaw amendments, and have a final council meeting to deliver the Phase Three results and conclude this thing. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, he just went to, he's going to be out for a few minutes. Do we have any questions? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I'd like to know why we didn't have all this information ahead of time. We have this comments from all the properties. I've been getting phone calls regularly about people who are totally against what is happening here. And I think the other part of Bridge Street on the north side, a guy owns that for years and has tourist-commercial development, which is substantial. The golf course that John Holder had and the campground is, without exception, different. The people have been doing studies to put residential development, and dealing with the city, and now they're coming in and saying, oh, you can't, you have to have industrial there. I think this thing is going off what the people are expecting to do with this here. What is the next steps regarding this? Are we going to have every property have the opportunity for a zoning bylaw in the council, or we're trying to do this by motion and accept what is being proposed? Alec, I would like your comments on this.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, through the counselor. What is being asked today is that council receive these comments that are before you, as I said, both written, and you will hear from some speakers shortly. So I am aware with respect to the campground previously owned by Marineland, and we did receive in Sunday evening a application for residential development on that property. So this is our opportunity to send this information back to the consultants to have a deeper look at this property, give them a chance to refine some of their recommendations. In the end, it may be that they recommend four employment lands, as they've identified we will have a shortage of employment lands by 2051, and it is important, in fact, it's mandated by the province, that we provide four jobs for the growing population.
What about, what about, what about Willoughby and Crollin areas? That's where you should be going out with industrial lands. All of the lands within the city, people have bought them and are working on what they would like to happen. And all you got to do is look at the comments on the agenda tonight. And Empire, out there building residential for years, now you're talking about industrial out there, Heartland Forest, you know, I think this is really going to cause a lot of concern with a lot of people regarding what they're recommending. Yeah, some of the industrial areas recommended, I don't have a problem with, but you look at your agenda tonight, and people are very upset and have put a lot of money in their properties and studies to do what they want to do, and now you're talking about employment lands. I think we got a tremendous amount of open area in the south end of the city, and that's where our concentration should be. Anyway, I think this is going to be a real concern to a lot of residents who rely on the city council to support them in what their development of the city and creating jobs, too. Anyway, I don't understand what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Strange, for taking the, I've got Counselor Aiononi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to piggyback on something Counselor Thompson just said. There's a big worry with residents out there in regards to industrial backing onto and not having a proper buffer from residential. And we hear from Solid Steel and Washington Mills all the time that we keep extending the buffer of residential too close to industrial, and the cost to the to industrial to for sound studies, and the complaints they have to deal with, I talked to the president out there, the complaints are almost weekly. So now we're looking at extending industrial lands, industrial employment lands adjacent to residential lands. So now we're doing it opposite. We're extending industrial into residential into industrial. I think there's a, there's, I think, not flaws, I think there's a lot wrong with this, with this, this amendment, this zoning amendment in here, and I think we really need to listen to and hear from the people from global country, world peace. There's a resident that has 12 really good questions in there because they bought land, they didn't know what to butt onto industrial. We're kind of changing the rules here mid-game, and houses are not cheap now, and if you have invested into a piece of property, and now you're learning that industrial is going to butt onto you, you're going to be really concerned. So I'm echoing what Counselor Thompson said, I've heard from a lot of people, too, and they are not happy with this whole thing.
So do we have any comment from our consultants in regard to these comments that you just heard from Counselor Thompson and Aiononi? I know we're just gathering information. I'm sorry, I know we're just, hold on, I got the floor. I know we're just gathering information, but I didn't know if there was any feedback at this point. I'm sorry, Mr. Hurlovich?
Yeah, so some of those properties are currently zoned industrial. You heard from Kelly Martel speak to that point, that much of the land north of Rexstinger Road and up to the Welland River is actually already zoned industrial. Some people have bought houses in there, they're actually legal, non-conforming houses. But we will ask the consultants to look at those questions. That's precisely why we're having this meeting, is to reach out to the population. And as, you know, the speakers outlined, we sent letters to the owners whose lands would be affected, and that's why we're precisely hearing from them that they have concerns. So this is our chance to ask the consultants to address those concerns. I agree with Counselor Aiononi that it would be dangerous to be setting or allowing industry to get closer to residential uses. So I would ask that the consultants consider that as they respond to this. And this is our chance to refine this and bring it back to council in the fall, as Mr. Fisher said. So, you know, and, you know, the consultants wish to elaborate on any of that, but, you know, this is the idea, is to gather the information now.
Mr. Mayor, do I still have the floor?
Yes, you do.
And through you to Mr. Hurlovich, I'm really glad to hear you say that, because somebody used the dichotomy of, you guys are always standing up there listening to the industry, saying, stop putting residential so close, but you do it anyway. So they're very concerned about us doing this anyway. So once we make that decision, that decision is done, and everybody who already owns houses out there and never in their life expected industry to come close to them, they're panicking. And today, it's impossible to sell a house without having to buy up. So there's, you've got a lot of residents out there who are really concerned about this, so I'm glad to know that you endorse them taking a sober second look at that.
Counselor Thompson, did you want to add to that?
No, I don't want to add to that. I just want to say, I was asking questions in the meeting before we came into council, and they said, the golf course at Oakland's and also the campground for the Marineland, I said, they've been working on residential out there and doing study and reacting to the city. Now they're saying, and they were sold, told in the back, that you are going to have your water treatment and your sewage, and you can't put residential out there. I lived on Swayze Drive in the townhouses there, right next door to the sewage treatment plant. And in the last, George Body just put up another high-rise condo there closer to the sewage plant. What's that all about? They let that happen, and I never really had any problem for 11 years when I lived there with the sewage plant. What's, what's the concern? I think we're really going to have to listen to the residents who own these properties and make our own decision. I'd like to have a nice condo overlooking the Welland River when in 2051, yeah.
Thank you for that, Counselor Thompson. So, Mr. Hurlovich, so you got your hand up, that's good. So if you could help weigh in on this, and especially help us understand, so there's going to be a new wastewater treatment plant that's going to be built out there, and I understand the MOE is refining some of their provincial setbacks. So is this part of our, you know, part of the decision-making criteria, that we're trying to have a buffer between that and residential? Or how could you help us understand what we're dealing with right now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the Ministry of the Environment does have distance separations set for these. You know, I know council have heard of the D6 guidelines, these are provincial guidelines that are set for distances, and certainly, you know, the lightest industrial zones, and in fact, Ms. Martel outlined that the intention would be for a PI zone. zones, and in fact, Ms. Martel outlined that the intention would be for a PI zone, which is a prestige industrial zone, which are our lightest industrial uses, would have the smallest setback, 70 meters. But from sewage treatment plants, the Ministry of the Environment currently has a distance separation of 1,000 meters. You heard from Mr. Fisher that the ministry is looking at increasing that to 2,000 meters as an area of influence. So it's an area where there would be, it's not distance separation, but a cautionary area of influence. And so it could be, if development was allowed of a sense of nature and residential would be a sense of land use. If development was approved, it could include things like a warning clause. Please be aware that there's a sewage treatment plant, and depending on prevailing wind directions, you may or may not be affected. And it could be something like that. It could be some mitigation, which would require something in terms of air conditioning of houses, so that, you know, on odorous days, you wouldn't be opening windows, you'd have to use your air conditioning. So there could be all sorts of mitigating factors, but, you know, that's way down the road as to what those distance separations mean. I had raised my hand because Counselor Thompson had spoken to Oakland's Golf Course, and this study does not touch Oakland's Golf Course. There's no recommendation that Oakland's Golf Course would be employment lands. But it does recommend that the campground, the former campground, would be employment lands. And so we will have the consultants reexamine that.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any other...Counselor Carrio?
Just a quick comment, Your Worship. I'm concerned as Counselor Thompson and Counselor Ayanoni are, I just want to make sure that all the people that could be affected are notified. And it really is going to be up to us, not the consultants. We're going to make the decision, just like we do every other time. So we're going to get all the information, get all the input from all the people that could be affected, and it's ultimately going to be our decision, like it always is.
Yep. Mr. Hurlavich, I've got you next, Counselor Campbell. Mr. Hurlavich, so that's the way it is, right? We're getting our input?
Absolutely. Yeah. It's going back to them. They'll come back in the fall with the refined document and maps.
That's great. Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I did have a few phone calls from concerned citizens living in these areas. And I went back specifically to look at the report and realized that this is just gathering information. As Counselor Carrio said, we're going to make a decision based on the final report. If we had to vote on it today, I don't think it'd get passed. So we need to have all the information available to us before we make any decisions. And I understand it's going to happen in the fall, Alex, is that true?
Mr. Hurlavich?
Yeah, sorry, couldn't unmute. That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed amendments. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Yes, Your Worship, we do have a long list of speakers. Perhaps we'll start with the printed version, that I believe you have a copy of there as well. And at the top of that list for item 7.1 is Mr. Rocky Vaca, and then perhaps we could proceed from there. The speakers should be reminded, we're trying to limit the speakers to five minutes or less, if possible, since we do have a number to get through.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Clerk, so we start with Mr. Vaca. Mr. Vaca, are you there?
Just have to unmute.
Yep, we can hear you.
Actually, Mr. Armstrong was going to speak first, and then I was going to give some closing submissions for the client.
Okay, that's Stephen Armstrong?
That's correct.
Okay, so we got him further down the list, so we'll go with him first. Mr. Armstrong, are you there?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Welcome to the meeting.
Yeah, thanks very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of the Warren Woods Development Corp., who's in partnership with Empire Communities. And we did give a written submission. So I could just summarize the comments. If I can just share a figure with the counselors, just to give an idea where the property is and to provide some context. We're looking at a 24, 25 acre parcel of land that was mentioned that's immediately adjacent to the Empire project that was built just to the west of the subject site that's in red. It's our respectful submission that we do understand that council and the region needs to balance between the employment needs of the city and the region through the provincial policy statement, places to grow, as well balance the needs for housing, both affordable and rental and freehold. And it's our submission that this property, when you look at it in the context of what's around it, in terms of the environmental buffering and the immediacy of the existing residential lands to the west, although the property does have good exposure, and there's no doubt about that on the QEW, it's our submission to council that Empire would propose to develop the site for mixed-use housing, including commercial. And specifically, what Empire is proposing to do is provide some mid-rise apartment units in a rental format, townhouses, and some single detached to the west that would act as a transition to the residential. As well, what Empire has asked me to do today, and the Warren Woods Corp., is to say to council, as part of their commitment and one of the recent initiatives, is that they're committing on this project that, in addition to the market rental that we all know is badly needed in the city of Niagara and the region and the housing needs, is that they would also commit to provide a certain percentage of affordable rental to the city and to the region. And I think it's clear that through some recent studies done by the Brock University and other studies that I can quote if you'd like, is that there's a dire need for not only rental housing, but affordable rental. So what we're proposing today, and for the consultants' consideration and council, is we don't believe the site is really an ideal employment site. We think it's a perfectly suited site for mixed use with the residential. And with that, what the community would see almost immediately is the inclusion of about 250 apartments that would be brought on stream, you know, subject to being built in terms of its immediacy. As well, there'd be approximately 50,000 square feet of retail and office space on the ground level of the apartments. And again, it's my submission that this would be a win-win for the city, in that you would be getting the rental housing stock, the townhouse form and the detached, the housing. But in addition, you would still be getting some form of employment through the professional offices and the retail that come along with the ground floor and could take advantage of the QEW. So in my submission, I would like and would propose that the site be reconsidered and be recommended for conversion in some form of mixed use. Empire today, again, on record, is committing to provide a certain amount of affordable housing to the city of region, which we've recently done on four other projects in the GTA. And with that, would be a commercial employment component on the ground floor. And again, what I'm going to say is, I believe that's a win-win. And given this site's proximity and the way it's situated in this figure, as the counselors can see, we think it's a perfectly appropriate site for this form of development. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Armstrong. Okay, so we'll go then to Mr. Vaca.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I don't quote philosophers very often, but Voltaire is famous for stating that common sense is not so common. And I'm going to ask you to keep that phrase in your mind for the next couple of minutes. If I could have Figure One back on the screen, I don't know if Mr. Armstrong can do that, or if Mr. Mattson can do that for me.
Okay, we're going to work on that from our end.
Okay, so the subject property is approximately 20 hectares. Of the 20 hectares, 11 hectares are open space environmentally sensitive. So we're down to roughly nine hectares of developable lands that are currently designated industrial. But if you look at the surrounding lands, to the east, you have the QEW corridor. To the south, you have Brown Road, and then again, a very large environmental block. To the west, you have the Warren Woods subdivision, as well as another very large environmental block. And falling to the north, you have the commercial area known as Niagara Square. So when I talk about common sense, I think the question we have to ask ourselves is, should this nine hectare parcel of land, far removed from any industrial lands, remain industrial? Common sense would dictate that the answer would be no. As you're aware, there's been mention of D6 guidelines and compatibility. Respectfully, industrial development on this site would be compatible with the existing surrounding uses. Common sense would dictate that any future development would need to be compatible with the abutting uses, which are residential and commercial. Mr. Armstrong, I'm not sure if you can put up Figure Two. So Figure Two is a concept plan that Empire Homes has put together for the site. As you heard from Mr. Armstrong, it would be a mixed-use development with a series of mid-rise apartment buildings with commercial uses on the main floor, which would create a substantial increase to affordable rental units in the city. Empire Homes is ready to build this tomorrow, if it is permitted to do so, if it is permitted to have the approvals in place. I believe Empire has already established a reputation in the city for developing, I think they've developed over 1,000, if not 2,000, units in the area, which have basically changed the landscape of this area of Niagara Falls. So I think if the designation were to change as being requested, this would not be lip service. This development would proceed as quickly as the Warren Woods subdivision has proceeded in the past. So what does the city need right now? Again, common sense would dictate that more affordable rental units within walking distance of a major transit hub and a major shopping center at Niagara Square is exactly what the city needs right now. Accordingly, we request that the subject property be converted from employment to non-employment lands for a mixed-use development, quite frankly, which would be reminiscent of what you would see on the QEW as you drive by Casablanca Boulevard in Grimsby. That's a good example of what could take place on this property and what Empire Homes is committed to develop on this property. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaca. Mr. Clerk, who do we have next on the list?
Can I have a question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Question from Counselor Carrio.
Well, I just would like to know if, how we handle what these people are suggesting. Does that Mr. Hurlavich make a comment? Or are we just submitting this back to the, going back to the consultant? Or how are we dealing with the people that are going to present to us, so that they have some comfort that they're going to have a serious look? Or are they going to wait till it comes back to us in the fall before they find out?
Yes, that's a great question. So, Mr. Hurlavich, how would you, because I'm trying to go along with the free flow of the meeting today, but I'm not sure at what points you should interject and maybe give us some commentary from municipal perspective. So any comments on that parcel that Mr. Vaca was just referencing?
I appreciate what the previous two speakers had to say. I would outline for council, nonetheless, that these lands are in the employment policies of the Garner South Secondary Plan, which, you know, the land developer helped develop. And those lands are described on the west side of Montrose Road as being offices, medical clinics, government services, research and training facilities, opportunities for live work, which is what they were speaking of, prestige industrial uses, commercial uses such as banks and restaurants, retail services. So we're not talking about heavy manufacturing, just to be clear. I would ask, though, that the consultants balance this. As council is aware, during this pandemic, many people were without work because they work in the service industry, and we've been asked to provide employment uses beyond service jobs. These are lands that front on the QEW, have prestige, and would attract prestige industries. But I would ask the consultants look at both the current policies that I just read to you, as well as the requests from Warren Woods, and report back as to what might be the best approach to meet the needs of...
Counselor Carrio?
Well, that's good. So we're going to get everyone's opinion, then we'll make the decision.
Okay. I've got Counselor Ayanoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, should either of the consultants, at any point, did they factor in the number of people who are working at home and will continue to work at home? I know a lot, I have quite a few friends who work in industry who are never going back to the plant, per se. Their jobs are now full-time at home. And I think, and listening to all the politicians speak, we pretty much know that's the future now. You're going to see a lot of physical plants not have people in it. And has that been factored into this document at all?
Let's get an answer from Ms. Martel. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you for your question. Yes, so first and foremost, the employment forecast for the Niagara region is prescribed by the, within the growth plan. So there is that balance already. But for the purposes of this study, we were just looking at the employment that would be accompanied on employment lands. So that figure I had up on the screen earlier, we speak to the percentage of total jobs that would be on employment lands. That would, of course, not include work at home. So for the purpose of this study, we didn't, we're not doing an overall employment study, but just looking at those jobs that would be associated on your typical employment lands.
Okay, Counselor? Yep, yes, you do.
Thank you. And the growth plan did not anticipate a global pandemic. So I think a lot of the numbers and a lot of the studies need to be relooked at, because it really has changed the scope of how people are going to work from here on out. So I just, while I understand the documents you're working from, those documents were done before a global pandemic. So we really need to take a look at how that's going to change.
Good point.
Thank you.
If I could just add, it's Jamie Cook here from Watson Associates. You can hear me. Just wanted to add to Adam's comments that we haven't looked at this issue in quite a detail since the pandemic started. And obviously, it's hard to get a clear read on where things are going right now and keep up with the latest information. But I would say that what we're finding is that the results of the pandemic haven't really had an impeding impact on the need for industrial land. In fact, if anything, it's really accelerated the need for industrial land. As we shift more from bricks and mortar retail to e-commerce and fulfillment, that's one of the key drivers, meaning it's driving the need for employment lands across GGH. Vacancy rates are at all-time lows across the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and the needs haven't, really haven't been stronger for employment land from my perspective in quite some time. So I would say that when we look at demand for certain sectors like retail and office, there's definitely disruption happening. But I wouldn't say we're looking at a downward impact on the need for industrial and prestige industrial space over the long term as a result of COVID.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Clerk, who do we have up next on the...oh, I'm sorry. Serge, I'm sorry. Yeah, Counselor Carrio.
So even if we don't disagree with the speaker, and we decide that we, at some point, need more industrial land, and Counselor Thompson made a good point, but does it have to be here? It could be somewhere. It could be somewhere, it, you know, we have to look at all the people's land, what they may want to do with it. And we may agree that we may need some more industrial property, or commercial, or light industrial, prestige industrial. But it, I guess it's going to boil down to this council deciding, is it here or is it another spot?
Fair comment. Okay, we've got Mr. Fallese, he's got his hand up.
Thank you, Your Worship. If I could ask Rocky, if you could put up that illustration that they were just sharing, because when, I just want to share a couple of things with counsel, because there is an existing industrial use. Roman Cheese is next to that parcel, so that's an existing food manufacturer. To the north, yeah, thank you. So there's Roman Cheese to the north, and they have, there's another light industrial zone property there. And then to the south, of course, is our Montrose Business Park. That's an old photo, but as counsel knows, we've pretty well sold out that park. We brought forward, I think we just are going to be bringing forward another two-acre sale. So there is, you know, in that area, there is existing industrial uses. So just wanted to share that with the counsel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Clerk, who do we have up next?
Yes, Your Worship, we have upwards of about 14 more speakers on this topic. Next up would be Jennifer Vida.
Jennifer Vida, okay, great, thank you. Ms. Vida, are you there?
My microphone's muted.
Your, your microphone's muted, Ms. Vida? Ms. Vida, I don't know if you can hear us, we cannot hear you.
Then you're gone.
Then you're gone, okay.
Maybe you lost connection.
Okay, so we'll come back to Ms. Vida if she joins us again.
Rick Brady.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, Rick Brady. Mr. Brady, are you there?
I am.
Oh, there we go. Excellent, we can hear you, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much. So I've sent my notes ahead to the, to the clerk and to Alex, so that if anybody wants to see what I, I speak about, there are copies available. Rocky is also sitting beside me, and he may have a couple of comments at the end. So this afternoon, I'm speaking on behalf of Fred Costabile and the property that he owns at 9304 McLeod Road. So there are two properties there, which are approximately 22.9 hectares in size. These properties were assessed as part of the Niagara Falls strategy that we heard of today, and they're subject to the city-initiated official plan amendment. The strategy has clearly recommended that these two properties be red, red designated from industrial to residential. And I, I'm sure you'll be glad to hear, as a counsel, my client completely agrees with this recommendation. So this is a property where the strategy is, is making a recommendation, and the owners of the property are in agreement with it. The neighboring, the neighborhood strategy of these properties is a quickly-developing residential area. There's properties to residential to the east and the west, to the south and the north are existing agricultural lands with a church also located in the north. These lands are in close proximity to existing planned schools and other community facilities. They should be a continuation of the development of that residential neighborhood. This is recognized in the strategy, and it's part of the subject of today's meeting. The properties have not been used for industrial purposes. It would be difficult for industrial uses to be on these properties due to proximity, and we know of the D6 guidelines. Lands within the urban area of Niagara Falls, and they are, it's very odd indeed for any suggestion that they should be removed, because they are a continuation of existing and developing residential areas. There is one area that is confusing from the planning staff report about these two properties. The notion that a deferral of the amendment is appropriate makes no planning sense. Since the official plan amendment and that the city is, will be producing, will ultimately be the subject of approval by city council, and then ultimately will be approved or considered by regional council, I'm not sure why there is a need for a deferral in favor of the region. The proposed official plan amendment redesignates the lands from industrial to residential. We support that. In my 35 years of practice in planning, I've never actually seen a deferral of an OPA. I've seen where holding symbols are, are dealt with through the zoning bylaw, but when those are in place, there is appropriate ways for those holding zones to be removed. With this deferral, there appears to be no specific way that I or my counsel, or my, we can take any action. So in a recent email correspondence from both the city planning staff and the consultant, it's not clear as to why there remains a deferral for this property. It appears that it may be unnecessary for other parcels, which are in discussion, but not for this parcel. Any deferral simply slows down the process of developing these lands for residential purposes. When residential development is slowed down by unnecessary bureaucratic processes, it can have a direct negative impact on the development of affordable housing. There's no discussion in terms of the holding provisions, so there's no mechanism for ever removing that. We would ask the city reconsider the deferral, as I can't see why it serves a planning purpose for this property. It has the potential of slowing down the development, which I don't believe is beneficial to the city nor is in the public interest. Once the OPA is actually approved by city, which I understand is this fall-ish, it's my client's intention to move it forward with a plan of subdivision and appropriate zoning bylaw for, for the property. The city can move forward, in my opinion, with that through pre-consultation on these applications, but obviously cannot give final approval to that until the region gives its approval to the official plan amendment. Respectfully, my client requests counsel to direct staff to remove the reference to the deferral in the final staff recommendation. In conclusion, thank you very much for listening to me this afternoon, and I hope you can support my, my client's uses. Rocky has a couple of comments he'd like to make.
Sure, Mr. Vaca.
After you, after you, Your Worship, members of counsel, I intend to be very brief. On the issue of imposing a deferral on the official plan amendment, that is something that I'd never seen done in my 24 years of practicing law and law. This led me to review the provisions of the Planning Act dealing with official plans and official plan amendments, and I can confirm based on my review, there's no provision in the Planning Act allowing for a deferral of an OPA, especially in the case where the OPA only comes into force when it's approved by the region, as is the case here. The definition of deferral is the postponement of an action or an event. So our fear is if you impose a deferral tag on this approval, then what is the region going to do once they receive the approval from the city? More than likely, they are going to postpone taking any action until the city confirms its approval is no longer deferred. That would cause unnecessary delays and create a great deal of confusion in my submission. Obvious questions that I'd be asking is, delay until when? Delay why? What needs to be done before the deferral tag is removed? I'm suggesting, Your Worship, members of counsel, you don't even consider doing this because the Planning Act does not authorize you to do this. Mr. Costabile is ready to develop the property for residential purposes as soon as approvals can be put in place. The development will include street town homes and will add to the desperately needed affordable housing units in the city. That is no doubt. And given Mr. Costabile's past history, you can be rest assured that it will be done without any delay. Accordingly, as Mr. Brady requested, I'm also requesting that you accept the consultant's recommendation that the property be converted to non-employment for residential purposes without any deferral. Those are my submissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaca. Counselor Carrio?
Well, thank you, Your Worship. After reading it, I, that was going to be my question, can someone shed some light as to why there would be a suggestion of a deferral? The council kind of prides themselves, when we're talking to developers and people wanting to invest in our community, that, that we have less red tape, that we're prepared to move forward. And then when I read this, and I saw that there's a deferral, I don't understand when we have a developer that's, you know, ready to go, we need lots, we need more affordable housing, we need things approved, shovel-ready. The only way really that there's going to be affordable housing, Your Worship, that if the demand is, is greater than the supply. So we need as much land being developed, houses being started, apartments being done, affordable housing being put on the market as we can. I'm curious to see why we would be suggesting deferral, and if there's not a really good reason, I'd like to see it gone myself. So I'd see what the staff has to say or the, or the consultants.
Sure, let's get a comment back from either Mr. Hrlavich or Ms. Martel.
Through you, through the chair, Mr. Hrlavich, if you don't mind me going first, I can just give a quick clarification, and I know Mr. Brady and I have been in some brief conversations about this over the last day or so, and I believe that on the city's side, the city has had a number of conversations in the last couple of days with the region on this. But the intent generally with this deferral in particular, which Mr. Brady did allude to, is slightly different than those deferrals associated with the proposed new employment land, is around the timing associated with the region's MCR and the timing associated with the release of our Phase 2 report. And at the time our Phase 2 report was written, the region had not yet determined the ultimate community area land need for the city to 2051. So at that time, we would not have been in a position to recommend it be brought forward for residential use because the need through the MCR had not yet been demonstrated. We do know now since that time, and about, I think, late May, the region did identify preliminarily the community area land needs for this city, which does identify there is a deficiency. And given that this site is within the urban area boundary and has been identified as no longer appropriate for employment uses, we do feel that the residential designation is appropriate at this time. But in terms of process due to the region's MCR ongoing, there are a couple of procedural items that perhaps Mr. Hrlavich or Mr. Dick, if he's here, can shed light on. But as Mr. Brady alluded to, this particular deferral may not be necessary and could likely be removed or revisited at some stage before we come back with a final recommendation.
Okay, thank you for that. Did you have anything to add to that, Mr. Hrlavich?
Keeping it short, I will just say that Ms. Martel has a, heard what Mr. Brady has to say. She has provided an answer, and I think, you know, will incorporate that into the final revisions that they will bring forward.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Counselor Carrio, you still have the floor?
So that's great, so what they're suggesting is that they will look at removing that deferral clause, and that would be great, thank you, Your Worship.
Well, we're not there, we're in a public meeting, we're in a public meeting, so. Okay, Counselor Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given the comments just made by both Mr. Hrlavich and the consultant, can we not make the motion tonight to pull that deferral out and, and not have that go forward so that the development can start as soon as the developer wants that to happen? Do we actually have to let it come back to us in the fall before we pull that?
Okay, well, why don't we get an answer? I don't know if I'm going to our clerk, or if I'm going to Mr. Hrlavich, or if someone can give us some direction on that.
Yeah, it just, it doesn't make sense to me, if we all agree that that's, that can happen, why would we leave that? If that's what they're going to come back with, and we know that, why would we not direct that tonight?
Mr. Hrlavich, can you help us out?
Well, it's a comprehensive study. I would prefer that it remained part of the entire package. We have not talked the region, while they have identified some shortfall in residential land needs for the city. They are still studying the employment needs, and the consultant's report basically said it's not needed for employment. But at this point, other than what I heard Ms. Martel say this evening, the report did not recommend residential. It said it was not suited for employment, but that didn't mean that it couldn't be some other use. This is not a private applicant's application, this is a municipal application, so somewhat different than if it was just an applicant moving forward. So I would prefer it to be part of a comprehensive amendment document.
Mr. Midwest, still have the floor?
Yes, you do.
That wasn't the question I asked. While you would prefer it, I did hear Ms. Martel say that could be, that deferral could be pulled. Can counsel legally tonight pull that deferral?
Mr. Hrlavich?
That's what I'm asking you.
Yep, Mr. Hrlavich?
Well, I think...
Well, let's get an answer from Mr. Hrlavich first, Counselor.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, you know, legally, I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to get back to you.
Well, I think legally we should know that, because I'm, I'm pretty certain that, given Ms. Martel's comments and the fact that while it's not needed for employment, that we wouldn't look at it for, for residential, I'm pretty sure we would. So both Mr. Brady and Mr. Vaca asked us, can we pull that tonight? And I guess my question is, I just want to know whether we can. Because if we can, when you close the meeting, I'd be happy to make that motion. I know Counselor Carrio spoke on it, so if that's what we're going to do, why can't we do it tonight as requested? So maybe we can ask Mr. Lustig?
Yep, that's where we're going next. So we're going to go to Mr. Lustig, and hopefully you've been tuned in, you've got your ears on, you're hearing the discussion. So the question is, can we pull this part regarding the deferral out of this report to deal with separately, or what's the legalities around it, Mr. Lustig?
Okay, Mr. Lustig, I don't know if you can hear us, but you're showing is on, but not showing is having your audio connected possibly, so not sure.
Well, Mr. Mayor, maybe we can go to another speaker and, when he comes on, or we could contact him and, and then ask the same question.
That's a good idea. So, yeah, Counselor Thompson?
Why can't we just make a motion and find out what the council feels and have that deferred and find out later if it's legal or not?
Well, I think, procedurally, why don't we...
Mr. Mayor, I, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know that I could make that motion in the midst of a public meeting.
Well, we can't really, in the midst of it, till we close the meeting. So that's why, we'll just leave it for now, we'll wait till we figure out, we'll get our IT guys down to visit Mr. Lustig to find out what's going on. And in the meantime, we'll go to our next speaker, who I believe is Daniel Romanko, is that right, Mr. Clerk? Yes, Daniel Romanko, are you there?
Just one second.
Yeah.
Is there? Just a minute. Yeah.
Okay, Daniel, your mic is muted.
Yep, okay, Daniel, we cannot hear you, so maybe we're having a technical problem, but we do not hear you.
So you might want to sign out, sign in, and we'll get you back in later on. So we're going to go through the list. Next, do we have William Overall?
He's, he's going to mute, but he's on.
Okay, Mr. Overall, if you're there, if you could unmute.
Could it be our problem on our end? No? Okay. Sometimes people just join to listen, not to communicate.
Okay, okay, so Mr. Overall, we don't hear you, so I'm assuming either you don't want to talk, or there's a technical problem. We'll move along to Paul Potter.
Mr. Potter, are you there? Yes, he is there.
Okay. You know, folks, even if you don't want to speak, you can just say I'm here, but I'm not going to speak, that'll help us.
Okay, so, all right, we're going to move, we're going to move along.
Jeffrey Drebin? Mr. Drebin, are you there?
No comments, I don't know why I'm on that list, but there's no comments.
Okay, great, thank you for letting us know. Okay, we'll move along to Brenda Kess.
Just wait for Brenda, she's got a presentation, she just has to rejoin, which she's doing right now.
Okay, so Brenda's rejoining us?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
She's good.
Okay. Brenda, can you hear us?
My microphone is unmuted.
All right. Brenda, we see your screen, we just don't hear you.
Okay.
Oh, there you are.
There we go.
Excellent. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to get this set up. There we go. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's been, this has been a very good conversation. I've been listening, too. I'm here this afternoon to deal with 9015 Stanley Avenue. The owner of the property is a numbered company. Angelo Butera is the key principal of the firm. And legal counsel with me today is Jennifer Ritchie from the Ritchie Law Professional Corporation, as well as Nancy Smith of Turks Durmasa. Now, Nancy is legal counsel for the owner, but she was unable to attend this afternoon. So, Ms. Ritchie will be able to respond to any questions. I am Brenda Kess from GSP Group. I'm a planner from a firm, Kitchener-based, and I represent the owners today. So, the reason we're here today really has to do with the lands that are on the west side of Stanley Avenue, mispronounced as 9015. And those are the former campgrounds that were discussed before. So, we know that the Watson Report identified 60 gross hectares of employment land in the city that was needed by 2051. And they recommended the introduction of a new employment area to address this shortfall. But the report, in our mind, did not clearly identify the site selection criteria to be used to identify those potential new areas. So, at the open house on June 29, 2021, Watson did provide a recommended location for the new employment area, including 140 acres of developable land, which was discussed by the speaker today. But 25 hectares of that land is my client's land, which you can see here. Hold on. So, there we go. So, the owners of these lands have submitted an official plan amendment to the city for a comprehensive redevelopment of these lands that include both the west and east sides of Stanley Avenue. These lands have been contemplated for non-employment urban development and have been the subject of the owners' development interest for the past three years. Specifically, the owners completed the pre-consultation process with city staff in 2018, who commented on the proposed mixed-use development and did not at any time identify the potential need for or interest in these lands for employment purposes. Since that time, the owners have been actively working on fulfilling the submission requirements for complete application to allow for this development. It includes, and those lands on the west side of Stanley are designated resort commercial, as are the lands further to the west. From a zoning perspective, the lands on the west side of Stanley are zone tourist commercial. And overall, what the developer's proposing to do is an incredible redevelopment of this area, which includes plus 1,300 units in the form of singles, street townhouses, multi-residential, four and a half hectares of parkland and trails, 2.3 hectares of neighborhood commercial uses, as well as a host of environmental protection areas and open space areas. This is an excellent non-employment area. It's contiguous to the 111 neighborhood. It has dual frontage along Stanley to provide mixed-use opportunities and the ability to provide a real complete community. It takes advantage of the extensive frontage along the Welland River for community open space purposes. The proposed redesignation and inclusion of the lands on the west side of Stanley Avenue for employment purposes will severely limit the ability to redevelop the east side of Stanley for mixed-use and residential purposes. In contrast, the region recommended the limited expansion of the Montrose industrial area, as illustrated in this slide, which essentially stops at the western limits of the wetland. So, this figure illustrates the region's recommended employment expansion area in purple or pink, however you want to look at it, as compared to the city's in orange. It also illustrates the extent of the proposed mixed-use development on the east and west side of Stanley, where it overlaps with the city's proposed employment expansion. It also better illustrates the significant wetland located between the region's recommended limits and the city's. Section 5.3 of the region's employment policy paper pertains to the identification and implementation of future employment areas in the region. The region notes that this is a multi-phase process that requires amendments to the regional and local OP. What is key here, though, is that the region came up with a set of criteria that were to be, as an initial screening tool, to determine whether proposed lands were suitable for identification as a future employment area. Now, my intent is not to go through each of these 11 criteria, but rather to illustrate the comprehensive manner in which the region undertook its review. So, what I would like to do is highlight a few of these key criteria that the proposed expansion, the proposed employment area does not meet. One of those is number four, the proposed lands consist of large contiguous parcels conducive for large-scale employment uses. Number six, proposed lands have no major restrictions by natural heritage systems, water resource systems, or other undevelopable and man-made features. And number 10, the proposed lands are located near other land uses that may limit employment viability, growth, or expansion, including minimum distance separation formula and D6 guidelines. The city's recommended expansion area includes a large wetland, criteria six, which breaks up the recommended extent of the employment lands, criteria four. Finally, the OPA application related to the east and west side of Stanley Avenue would severely restrict employment viability to these proposed sensitive land uses, which would impact the ability to satisfy criteria 10. So, in contrast, we have not been provided with a clear understanding of the city's employment land criteria. At the last open house, we were advised of six points or criteria that were used and are noted in this slide. This list does not include all of the initial screening criteria provided by the region, which should be the starting point. In light of the proposed redevelopment east and west of Stanley Avenue that has been in the works for the past three years, the lands at 9015 Stanley Avenue will have significant land use compatibility issues, region criteria two, and the ability to provide buffering with, sorry, city criteria two, and the ability to provide buffering with limited, will be limited, which is criteria three. So, at a minimum, the criteria must include recognition of the limitations imposed by natural areas or features like the wetland that separates my client's lands from the larger employment area to the west. This site includes an excerpt from the city's OP Schedule A2, the Urban Structure Plan, with an overlay including the 10 sites considered for conversion, the Watson Report. Yes?
Hi there. I'm on again, but I'm having some difficulty. Go ahead, though.
Sorry, that's Ed? That's Ed Lustig?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, I'm sorry about that, Brenda. That's our...
No problem.
That's our solicitor. We've got him connected again. Okay, that's great news. Okay, thank you. Continue on.
Okay. So, only three of those sites were recommended for conversion for non-employment uses.
Okay. Well, I'm on, so I don't know that I'm on, so.
So, the Watson Report recommended that 166 hectares of the Solvay area lands, which is number 10 on the slide you can see before you, be removed from the city's vacant land industrial land supply because of a lack of opportunity for development. The intent of the employment land needs assessment is to ensure there is sufficient designated employment land to the year 2051. As with many other properties throughout the city designated for various purposes, there's no way of knowing whether these lands will be available for development over a 30-year time period. Accordingly, removing 166 hectares from the vacant supply is questionable without a greater understanding of why these lands lack development opportunity, as well as consideration of environmental features that may or may not limit the industrial developments of this existing 442-hector industrial area. The region has not yet completed its 2051 employment land allocation as a part of the regional municipal comprehensive review. However, the city's Watson Report projects a total land demand of 108 gross hectares over the long term and a total shortfall of 60 gross hectares. On this basis, the report recommends adding more lands to the city's employment base, more than the region currently recommends. However, a clear understanding of the alternatives considered has not been articulated. Consideration of other lands for employment purposes that are contiguous to existing employment uses and already planned for employment purposes should be considered. Like the previous slide, this slide includes an excerpt from the city's official plan Schedule A2. I've included an overlay of the region's recommended expansion lands, including the QEW employment corridor greenfield lands. Next, an overlay of the city's recommended expansion lands, including the greenfield lands outside of the defined QEW employment corridor and lands within the built boundary. The general location of undevelopable intervening wetlands. So, based on this map, one suggestion would be to include lands that have already been approved for employment purposes within the QEW employment corridor. While the lands west of Montrose Rose and some of the lands east of Montrose Road are already designated industrial and intended for hospital employment purposes, they do represent developable employment land, and we understand that the hospital is intended for these lands. So, we're uncertain why these lands have not been considered. Mr. Fisher noted in his presentation that the proposed employment expansion area is the preferred location. Yet, we are not clear where the alternative locations were located that were considered. This map is an excerpt from the city's recommended official plan amendment and illustrates the lands identified for a new employment area, including my client's lands west of Stanley, west of Stanley circled in red. My client's lands are currently designated resort commercial and zone tourist commercial. These lands have never been identified for industrial uses in either the official plan or zoning bylaw. The map clearly illustrates the fragmentation of the lands proposed for employment purposes and the extent of the wetlands. The designation of these lands for employment purposes is not recommended, especially when the wetland clearly represents an appropriate natural terminus of the region's recommended employment area to the west. The redesignation of these lands to industrial will also restrict the urban residential and/or mixed-use development of the lands east of Stanley Avenue within the built boundary. As noted at the beginning of my presentation, the redevelopment of these lands that is proposed will provide for appropriate mixed-use urban development within the built boundary and will assist the city in meeting its housing needs and the provision of complete communities. This slide illustrates how the industrial expansion area is broken up and separated from the larger employment area by environmental features. These lands include pockets between environmental protection areas and environmental conservation areas. Their development potential is uncertain at best without an EIS. In addition, it's noted that within this area, while they were identified by the presenters as being zoned industrial based on the 1966 zoning bylaw, those lands were designated for tourist commercial purposes in the more recent 1992, I believe it is, originally official plan. So, to say that those lands have always been perceived as industrial is a bit deceiving in the sense that the city has already, the city council has already approved a tourist commercial designation for these lands. The lands simply weren't resold to be in conformity with the official plan. So, on this basis, we'd like to recommend that the city support the region's recommended expansion limits to the Montrose employment area, recommending that the city amend the draft-proposed official plan and zoning bylaws proposed by staff as they relate to 9015 Stanley Avenue, and that the analysis of recommended conversions and how they fit in with the overall strategy be further assessed, and that the analysis consider whether the supply of employment land is being improperly reduced to justify further designations for employment purposes. Thank you for your time, and I would be pleased to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kess. Any questions or comments of Ms. Kess? Yes, Counselor Carrio.
I just wanted to make one comment, your worship. It was an excellent presentation.
Yeah.
Even though she was speaking fairly quickly, it was easy to follow.
Yeah, I liked the visuals. Those are really good visuals.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And did any of your group need to speak at this point? I know you mentioned Jennifer Ritchie and another individual. They don't need to speak at this point?
Only if there are questions.
Okay. Looks like we're good at this point. Thank you for that. We'll go to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Evan Snugden there? No, he's not there. Amir?
Ahmed Raafar is. Ahmed.
Is it Amir?
I have Ahmed.
You have Ahmed. Okay. Okay. We'll go with yours.
Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Lustig back?
Mr. Lustig, are you...
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. I don't know how much you missed or how much you caught, but there was a question on a deferral that's part of the recommendation, if that could be done separately and not deferred? So, that was the question, if through this planning process, if we were allowed to do that. Mr. Hurlovich, if I've not gotten that right, you can help me describe it better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the question was whether or not some particular lands at the southwest corner of, I think it's Beechwood and McLeod Road, which the consultants identified as not needed for employment purposes, whether counsel could separate out those lands this evening and direct staff to prepare an amendment for a upcoming council meeting to then designate those for residential purposes. As I said, I don't know that...
Yep. Ms. Lustig?
Yeah, Alex, just to you. I don't see any prejudice to anyone by doing that, but I may be missing a point here. Do you see that, looking at this from a procedural fairness point of view, do you see that there would be anybody that would be negatively impacted if counsel did that? Because I don't see it.
No, I don't know that anybody would be negatively impacted. I just hope it doesn't start a domino, in fact, this evening with everybody asking for something else. But I would say that, you know, these lands were specifically identified in the draft amendment that was attached or is attached to the council report that identifies employment to residential and that it be deferred. But counsel can proceed, I suppose. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't specifically advertise these lands for this purpose and by counsel extracting it, whether or not we were contrary to Planning Act requirements for giving notice. That was my only concern.
Yeah. I mean, nothing is perfect here, but I think the council would be all right in doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll just wait till you close the meeting.
Okay, that's great. So, Ms. Otley, is Mr. Rathod on?
He is available, but he's muted, so you may not be able to speak.
Ahmed Rathod, if I've got your name right, or Rathod. Did you, are you here to speak or are you just listening?
Yeah, no comments. Thanks for having me in the meeting.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next in, we've got Bill Crocker. Is Mr. Crocker there, Ms. Otley?
Unmuted. Yes, Bill Croker.
Croker. Okay, great. Did you have comments, Mr. Croker?
Yes, I have a couple. I live near the area that we're talking about, where the plant, the preferred location of the waste treatment plant is.
Yes.
And I sent an email to all of counsel regarding my concerns and suggestions, and I'd like to read that into the record, if I may?
Okay, sure.
Okay. While it appears that this is simply an administrative matter to move the zoning to be governed under Niagara Falls Bylaw 79-200 instead of the former Willoughby Bylaw 66-395, I have since seen an official Niagara Falls zoning map, and I could put that up on the screen if you wanted, but it's dated March 2011, that shows the lands in question, with the exception of the existing Dell Cemetery, to be officially zoned tourist commercial. So, unless there's been a rezoning since then, it would appear that this is more than just an administrative renaming exercise, but rather a significant change to the use of the lands. I think Ms. Keys addressed that. But regardless of my bias, there are better uses for the identified lands, better for the city, and better places for the redeployment of employment lands. I have some questions and suggestions. It appears... It appears from Schedule 5 that regardless of the employment land syntax, changing from bylaw to 395 to 79-200, the actual zoning is changing from industrial and tourist commercial to prestige industrial, still industrial, however it's worded. It also shows in Schedule 5 that the Dell Cemetery is also to be deemed prestige industrial. Shouldn't it be protected, as it is on the 2011 map? Then there's the environmental concerns. The letter has a diagram showing the entire area from Chipperwog Creek to Rexinter Lions Creek Road to Stanley to be zoned employment, yet the proposed official plan map 4 to amendment number XX shows several cutouts for environmentally protected areas and environmental conservation areas. If I read the scale properly, some of the designated prestige industrial areas are less than 150 by 100 meters, which would require passage through environmental land to access. Would you prefer a house, a school, a strip plaza, or a chemical plant adjacent to an environmental area? If one of those small cutouts for environmental happens to be in the middle of a proposed five-acre site for 110,000 square foot factory, would they design a little walled-off area into the building plan, or do you think a future council would simply grant an exemption? I also understand there is a First Nations burial site on the land. In a residential or mixed subdivision, each of these cutouts can be built into the design of a residential community, not so much for an industrial park. The fact that there will be a new residential or a regional hospital about two kilometers to the west should also contribute to the conversation. There will be a need for a large residential and recreational area for hospital staff, and the designated lands would make a perfect location for that, walking or biking distance to the hospital, close to the falls, close to the Stanley Industrial Park. Should Prime Well and Riverfront be wasted on industrial use, or would it be better used as a river walk or a residential waterfrontage? May I be so bold as to suggest the following amendments. Although the QEW to Dell Road could be employment lands, as there are a few commercial ventures in that area, but since with the exception of Next Terra, which I believe is temporary, they're mostly home-based businesses, probably best that everything except the water treatment plant be residential. Certainly, there's nothing that would classify as prestige industrial. From the documentation provided, I have been able to find, I was under the impression that said plant was to be located in the far eastern part of the lands, but I understand this has now been revised to be directly north of the Dell Cemetery. And there will be open lagoons of raw sewage, which obviously needs to be revisited. As a aside, I happen to be within two kilometers, two-kilometer smell zone that Mr. Fisher mentioned, and I was not insulted, nor were any of my neighbors on this plant. Back to the letter. Having seen the map of the proposed plant, it looks like about three square kilometers, although the official documentation says it's only 400 meters by 400 meters. And the area which was initially described is left unused. I have a number of questions and concerns, particularly the environmentally protected areas that are going to suddenly evaporate, but this is a subject for discussion with the region. But one would think that the map should be accurate as to such an important location. Third, from Stanley, from the Dell Cemetery to Stanley, or Dell Road to Stanley, bordered by Lions Creek on the south and the Welland River on the north, could be zoned residential and environmental. A, there would be water and sewer as a result of the new water plant. B, a development could be envisioned that includes multimillion-dollar homes on the Welland River that would, A, attract world-class doctors and specialists to the hospital because of the lifestyle that, while expensive, is cheap by comparison to Toronto or New York City, and, two, would provide a high residential tax base. C, such a subdivision could also include a single-family home, higher-density housing providing for a diverse community. D, on our daily walks down Rexinter, I've seen enough cars and trucks that look like developers eyeing those lands, stopping to ask who owns them, that I'm sure it would be easy to get a development designed and built. E, there are very environmental areas which will make for a very nature-friendly lifestyle. And F, while one could argue that such a development be in the area closer to the hospital, which geography would families prefer? Fourth, additional employment lands can be positioned around bigger and Montrose, and along Montrose would be closer to infrastructure, which the hospital will dictate, has sufficient land to be used for any-sized establishment, and has less risk of water pollution than being on the Welland. And there's no existing residence to be impacted. I'm not a city planner, so I'm sure I've missed several important points, but perhaps this is worthy of evaluation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Croker. Do we have any, at this point, Mr. Hulovich, did you want to address, or what's your preference at this point with some of Mr. Croker's questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with the last statement of the speaker. He says perhaps this is worthy of evaluation, and again, because we have other speakers, I refer this back to the consultants to examine his suggested land use arrangement.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Croker, for a well-thought-out presentation.
Thank you.
Moving along, we've got Jody Burdette.
He's not online.
He's not online? Okay, Robert Crawford? Yes? Mr. Crawford, are you there?
Yes, but he's muted.
He's muted? Okay. Mr. Crawford, you're muted? Didn't know if you wanted to speak or not? Okay, well, we're not hearing you, so I'll move along. To Barb Gahn. Barb Gahn, are you there, Ms. Gahn? Hello, yes, we hear you. Welcome to the meeting.
Yes, I am here, and I don't really have anything prepared, but I do definitely agree with Mr. Croker on many of his points, if not all of them. I've been fortunate enough to live across the street from the designated area for 40 years and have enjoyed the view. I do understand that progress is necessary and will be coming. And if I can just say, I think I would rather see houses tastefully put in there, parkland, preservation of the wetland areas, as opposed to factories, industrial, transport trucks, possibly a grow-up, who knows what? Who knows what? But I'm against it being industrial, and would, and so is our neighbor. I'm here with Ron and Anna Neal, and they agree. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, Marino, is Greg Marino there? Yes? Mr. Marino, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, but I've submitted something that I wanted read into record, that I've emailed out. I don't have it with me at this moment.
Yep.
I haven't heard it read into the, into this meeting.
Do we, we've got his comments, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have your comments included as part of the report.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Iannone.
If you could pull that up, Mr. Marino had 12 questions. He's in my notes on, and I had referred to that earlier. And his questions were, I'm going to pull it up right now. Like, he wanted to know things that if this went through, would he be able to add in addition to his residence? Would he be able to build the large garage? Would he be able to build an in-ground pool with a poolhouse? What date would the proposed zoning changes happen if approval took place? What will be approved uses in the new zone area where his property is located? For example, if prestige industrial, what types of businesses would be allowed to move in this area? Are there any infrastructure improvements planned in the new designation? Will his property taxes be unchanged? What will the value of the property and his house decrease? Will the city consider purchasing his property at market value or above because of this situation? Have you considered changing the zoning in other areas? He says, I know there are many other locations that could be chosen for this type of zoning. Example, bigger road and surrounding areas. He said the main reason he bought his home was the location, and largely because it was fronted by a quiet street in an environmentally protected area, located directly behind his property. How can an industrial zoning be considered in light of the fact that it will bring in noisy industrial traffic, increased airborne contaminants that will impact the quality of life for all residents, and possibly the termination of life to various species living in that environmental protection area? And will the environmental protection area remain unchanged? And I wanted to read those out, because those were a lot of the questions that residents in that area were asking. So his 12 questions were, I thought maybe he had coordinated with other residents, because that was a lot of the questions I was getting. So maybe our staff could answer any one of them?
So, Mr. Hulovich, I know some of these questions you will not be able to answer, but did you want to, were there any here out of the 12 that you think you could answer at this point or address?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the counselor. I'll start with the first couple of questions. Could he put an addition on his house? So his dwelling is currently legal nonconforming because the property is zoned industrial under the Willoughby Bylaw. He would have to make an application to the Committee of Adjustment to put an addition to his house. The, there was a question about could he put a pool? Pool is actually considered a structure, and that would not be attached to the house. So my read of the Planning Act is that you can expand a use, which would be put in addition to the house, but the pool would be separate. Similarly, a detached garage would be separate. Or did I mean garage? Anyway, the building would be, so some of those would go through Committee of Adjustment, so he can't just come in for a building permit with his drawings. He would have to go through Committee of Adjustment first. With respect to taxes, I wouldn't know. Infrastructure improvements, you know, as the treatment plant opens, I'm sure we'll see improvements to infrastructure down there. I don't recall all of the questions. I had asked Mr. Dick, who's our staff liaison, our manager of policy, to respond to the speaker, so I don't know whether he got back to Mr. Marino or not. I had hoped that he would have before now, but if not, then we could certainly get those addressed. But I think, you know, the real question is, you know, whether or not, you know, it's appropriate to continue with an industrial zone next to that housing. So I think we need to have the consultants look specifically at the housing that is provided on Rexinter Road relative to the uses permitted.
Just one, I don't know if you can still hear me.
Yes.
Nobody has gotten back, nobody, it's, nobody has gotten back to me as of yet.
Okay, that's, that's Mr. Marino speaking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's good to know. So that's noted, noted by Mr. Hulovich. And then there was somebody else online that was speaking. I don't know if that was Mr. Croker?
It was me, actually.
No, I hadn't heard another male, no?
No.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Iannone.
Will the, will the environmental protection area remain unchanged? So that's what a lot of people were asking.
Mr. Hulovich, how would you?
Can you build, can you build industrial around an EPA?
Mr. Hulovich?
I'm sorry, I mean a wetland, or an environmentally protected area.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it would be the, so environmental protection, those lands are classified as provincially significant, so there would not be any development in that, in those lands that are currently zoned EPA. You could do an environmental impact study, which would be a four-season study of the environmental conservation lands, which are in close proximity to some of those environmental protection lands that might allow a form of development. It's going to depend on what that study says. And any development such as industry would have to go through a site plan approval process, and any property that abuts or was within 120 meters of an environmental protection area would have to do a environmental impact study as well to demonstrate there would be no impact from that development on the, on the provincially significant wetlands. So possibly, development could be impacted by the presence of those wetlands. It would depend on what the study determines could be allowed, but, so EPA would be protected. There could be some development, and it would, the level of development depends on studies.
Okay, great. Does that answer your question, Counselor Iannone?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, great. So now back to the list. Mr. Clerk, where are we at?
Well, we do have indication that Jennifer Ritchie does have a comment she may like to make. We could start there, and then perhaps just check in again with a few that we didn't hear from, give them one last opportunity.
Okay. So, Ms. Ritchie, are you, are you online? Can you hear me?
Yes, I am on the line, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. So welcome to the meeting.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. I am, my specific comments don't relate to the presentation that was made by our planner, Brenda Keyes. They relate more specifically to the request that was made by Counselor Iannone with respect to lifting the deferral and passing a motion today relating to the lands at 9304 McLeod Road. And I think there was some commentary as to whether that was legally possible, or in fact, whether that would be prejudicial to other interested parties that are here at this public meeting. And I defer to Mr. Lustig. However, I believe that the purpose of this public meeting today, as indicated by Director Hulovich, was for the purposes of completing a comprehensive review of the employment lands, as has been recommended by Watson and Dillon and by planning staff. And there is, and there are competing interests with respect to all of the various parties that are speaking here today, in terms of competing interests as to whether certain lands should be considered employment lands and/or whether certain lands should be completed lands, be considered lands of non-employment use. And I think we are at a time in the process that is a little bit preliminary to pass a motion suggesting that in fact, a deferral on any lands subject of this application, because if, if, sorry, a deferral or a lifting of the deferral, because if that would be the case, then, you know, we would be making submissions at this point in time to request a motion to have the 9015 lands completely removed from this application in its totality. So I think, and I again defer to the Director of Planning today, whereby he's indicated that the purpose of this meeting is to ensure that everyone's interests and comments are accepted and heard by council. And given that there are competing interests here with respect to the designation of lands that are employment and non-employment, it would be my recommendation and submission that a motion not be passed or not be recommended today to defer, to lift the deferral on those D-1 lands, because there is, there would be prejudice to all the participants here at this public meeting. And with all, I make those comments respectfully to Counselor Iannone and to council, but I think the purpose of this meeting is today is to ensure that everyone's interests are heard and that we, that council and the city perform a proper assessment of where these employment lands should be designated within the regional, within the city of Niagara Falls. And those are my comments.
Okay, thank you for that. So, Mr. Hulovich or Mr. Lustig, did either of you want to weigh in on the comments that you just heard?
I have no comment. I have no comment. Let's, I'll leave it to council.
Okay. And Mr. Lustig, any further comment? Okay, so, I'm assuming, nothing from Mr. Lustig, I'm assuming? Is he even on the line? He's on the line, okay.
Sorry, I was, I'm having some difficulties today.
Okay.
Uh, no, I don't have any, um, any comments either, um, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Carrio.
Well, Your Worship, I disagree with what she was suggesting, that there's competing issues here. We're trying to deal with all of the people and, uh, that are making presentations and make them all happy. We're not playing one off against another in any means, in my mind.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Um, so, Mr. Clerk, we'll go back through the list then, and see which other names that perhaps, so you, you go ahead and read them out, the ones you believe we should.
Well, I, I would suggest that we start with Jennifer Vida. It does appear that she is on the line now. Okay, and if she's not there, perhaps if there are any that had registered to speak, that still wanted to speak, if they could raise their hand electronically, uh, that would give us a better indication, as opposed to going through them one at a time, and give a few moments for them to see that.
We do have Mr. Burdette that's not online.
Okay, okay, Mr. Burdette, you're there?
He's muted. That is.
Mr. Burdette, you're muted, we cannot hear you.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, hold on a moment. Okay, I'm back. Um, I just want to read, note the questions on the letter I submitted, and if Alex can answer them, I'd appreciate it. Okay, I'll, I'll read all the questions first, and he should have a copy of it, so he could just answer them in order. Uh, the first one was, um, is the North Bridge Street area going to be included into the downtown CIP? Um, do the property owners that are going to be taken out of the, uh, industrial zone, are they aware that they're going to lose all of their DC exemption rights? I believe that, uh, industrial is totally exempt currently, and when they drop out of that, they will be subject to different, uh, DC charges. Number three, will they, will the north side of Bridge Street there, when they, when their zone gets changed, will they lose their side and rear yard setbacks? Because, um, I believe currently they, they have, though, they don't have any, because they have but a railway. Number four, um, will they also lose their outdoor storage rights when the zoning gets changed? Okay, number five was, um, back when the, well, because Bridge Street is going to be somehow connected to the CB4 zone provision of the AM 2020 007 zoning amendment, um, one of the original CB, uh, provisions was actually changed. So, I let, I wrote that in the letter, so you can see what it is. I'm not going to read it out. But, uh, I just wanted to know if, if the north side Bridge Street was going to be subject to the original CB zone, or the new CB1 zone, I guess that's how you'd have to say it. Um, number six, what are the current future options for cleaning up the contaminated lands of the industrial areas? Uh, are they going to lose or gain any rights with the zone change? Number seven, is there any way for the owners, this is mainly Bridge Street section, is there any way for the owners to appeal the provisions of the CB1 or CB4 zones if they're going to be included in that? Uh, number seven A, will you be including the wording of the CB4 in this new zoning bylaw? Seven B, CB4, uh, is under appeal. I was just wondering if there's going to be any complications with suggesting that they be classed as CB4 when, and sort of CB4 doesn't exist right now. Okay, number eight, um, the word being any portion of a building for the yards requirement of the CB4 zone is a little bit confusing, confusion. If you could explain what any portion of a building, and how it controls the various yard requirements, I would appreciate that, because I just can't follow that. And that deals with the, uh, the front and the sides yards. Okay, number nine, um, there is the provision where you have a minimum height of a building structure of nine meters in CB4, but, uh, I'm under the impression that because anything under nine meters automatically falls into the CB1 zone, is that a relevant provision? Number 10, um, under CB4, amenity spaces are required for apartment units. I just wanted to know, are they required for condominium units and vacation rentals in buildings that are over 12 meters? Number 11, are apartment units the only way to have residential unit on ground level? Number 12, are hotel units, motel units, and vacation rentals at ground level considered residential units at ground level? Thirteen, does the CB4 provision, minimum elevation for residential grades at use, only apply to the apartment units? Okay, number 14, uh, this is an opinion, okay? I feel it is unfair to mandate a minimum elevation for residential uses at grade. This provision should not be included in any zoning bylaw. It sends a message that we do not respect the elderly and disabled. They should be able to enter upon property and buildings via the main entranceway without any grade issues. I, you know, take for example City Hall, people unable to walk up the stairs have to enter the building via a ramp at the side of the property. I can't help but to see that as, that as we are mandating segregating the elderly and disabled to use a different entranceway than those of the general public. Now, I know council voted for this provision in the bylaw 2020 007, and I can only hope that it was an oversight. Should this provision be included into this bylaw as well, I do request that each council member and the mayor make public their view clear on this matter, whether they support that issue or not. Number 15, um, to just the general public that are listening, I want to bring home the seriousness of new zoning bylaws making properties nonconforming. These property owners should understand that for all practical purpose, what they do and have today is all they will ever do and have. If they abandon, close, or change their use, they will not be allowed to use the property or building as is ever again. Please research what assets and liabilities this new zoning will do to your property, and don't be afraid to ask for what you want. If the city of Niagara Falls will not accommodate your requests, it's easy and a small price to pay to ask LPAT. And the last one, as an appellant of zoning bylaw, AM 2020 007, I do feel obligated to appeal any bylaw that includes the same provisions under that appeal. Consider the reasons that appeal to be concerned with this bylaw as well. Should any member of the public wish to read the details of that appeal of AM 2020 007, all they have to do is ask City Fall for help. So if Mr., so if Alex can answer the planning questions, I would appreciate it.
Uh, first off, I'll, I'll get Mr. Hrlavich if he could address some of these. The only, the part that jumped out at me, Mr. Burdette, is the fact that you made mention of the ramp taking people to a different entrance, and that's not, that's not correct. That ramp brings them to the front entrance, so they do in fact go through the front doors.
Uh, thank you, I, I actually meant it was the entranceway, so they don't actually get to walk from the sidewalk all the way up to the front door. They actually have to go a different way to get to the main entrance. But thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hrlavich?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the speaker assumed that I would have a copy of his questions in front of me. I do not have a printed copy, and I don't have access to them electronically. I'm not sure why, that they're not in my agenda notes, but I, I don't have those. So, it was a long, lengthy list of questions, I can't respond to all of them. Uh, the proposal is they would be zoned CB4, so the suggestion, or questions regarding CB1, no, they're CB4, they would be subject to all of those provisions. Would they be subject to the same setback requirements? Yes, they would. Are they subject to the same height? Yes, they would. Mr. Burdette says he feels obligated to appeal this, because he has appealed to the other downtown zoning bylaw. That's within his right. If he, he encouraged others to appeal it, that might not be within their rights if they have not submitted comments during this public consultation period. The, with respect to could, um, are, are vacation rental units considered dwelling units? Yes, they are. Would they be subject to the same floor elevations of the bylaw? Uh, yes, they would be. I understand Mr. Burdette has appealed that, that's part of his appeal, and that will be determined during the hearing process as to whether that remains or not. Um, the, um, would these people lose their rights? Uh, yes, most of those uses on the north side of Bridge Street, where the zoning would be affected, are, um, uh, auto body shops, and CB4 would not allow an auto body shop as a permitted use. Uh, the zoning that's in front of council, so there are two properties on the north side of Bridge Street, those would retain the, um, special provisions that they currently enjoy. So those would be passed along. There is the parking standard, uh, different for condos versus vacation rental units? Yes. Uh, condos are one space per unit under the current, um, under the appealed by law. Under the current bylaw, it's 1.4 parking spaces per unit. Um, for, under appeal, the requirement is two parking spaces per vacation rental unit. I think that covers the majority of the questions, uh, but I could, um, prepare a specific response if that's what council wishes, or whether we just wish to turn all of these questions over to the consultants, so they can address when they respond back to council in the fall.
Well, I think you did a pretty good job concerning you didn't have it in front of you.
I was pretty impressed, for not having the question, so it was like, wow.
Yeah, and I realize, uh, Mr. Burdette had emailed it just yesterday, and I just forwarded it, for some reason he sent it to a general mailbox at planning, so I just forwarded it to the clerk and to yourself, Mr. Hrlavich. So I think that makes sense, that we include it for the consultants to address more thoroughly. But that was great, that was a great attempt and great memory, wow. You're taking your ginkgo biloba, it's working. Uh, Mr., Mr. Clerk, who else do we have on the speakers list yet?
Uh, it looks like we don't have any other hands raised, so that might be the end.
All right, Counselor Carrio.
Thank you, Your Worship, just a quick one. Um, I'm, I'm assuming, um, that the comments, uh, on the suggestions by Mr. Butera's planner, um, I don't know whether Mr. Hrlavich wants to make any comments on those. We didn't ask when she finished. She had made some recommendations, or that that just gets, um, sent to the, um, to our people, our consultants. I didn't know whether he had any comments he wanted to make on those. Those were some good suggestions as well. I didn't know whether he wanted to comment, while it's fresh on our minds.
Sure, yeah, Mr. Hrlavich?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that it is best to refer that to the, um, to the consultants. Um, you know, she compared the criteria of the region versus the criteria that the consultants used in site selection, and I think that, um, would be quite telling to see how those two stack up and how they merge. Uh, she spoke to the idea of the environmental protection lands, um, as a buffer between the lands identified by the region for employment versus her clients' lands. So I think those are all things that really need to be addressed on, on the large scale.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's great, thank you for that. Okay, so if we have no more speakers, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed official planning and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded, so did we want to lift that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Iainoni?
If, if you're closing the meeting, I would make the motion that the lands requested by Mr. Back and Mr. Brady be removed from this tonight.
Okay, do we have an address for that, Counselor?
Yeah, I wrote it down, just one moment.
Is that 9304 McLeod?
I have like six pages, yes, 9304 McLeod.
Okay, and that's seconded by Counsel Thompson. Uh, do we have any speakers to that? Counsel Carrio?
Just a question, so that mean, that suggests means that the, um, that we're approving that, so the, we're approving the OPA and bring it back, the bylaw for the, uh, the passage next meeting, is that what that means?
Is that what that would mean, um, Ms. Martel?
Or just, that we just pull it out?
I didn't think we were approving the OPA today.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, yes, it's, sorry to interrupt, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, just for clarification, I want to understand whether or not the direction is that through the receipt of the public comments today, that you are recommending the consultants remove the deferral upon such time as we come back with the final recommended OPA and ZBA. At this time, we are not, we're not bringing forward any sort of recommendation for approval.
No, okay, no, that's understood.
I just want to make sure we're clear that what would happen in the process is that, subject to any, like, finalization of the amendment, when we come back forward, that deferral is, you're, you're suggesting not be a deferral at that time, not immediately following this meeting. Because I would defer to legal on that, but I don't think that that is something that can be done at the public meeting stage, because there's no decision today.
Okay, so?
See, and I thought, Mr. Mayor, I thought that's what you asked.
Me?
Yeah, I don't want to make an improper motion, but I thought Mr. Lustig said, my, my question was, are we permitted to do this? And, and Mr. Lustig said he did not see this prejudicial, and he didn't have a problem with that. So I just want to make sure that my motion is okay.
So let's just double-check with Mr. Lustig, to make sure that we're going about this the right way, by lifting the deferral on that specific item. Uh, Mr. Lustig, or is, is he online? Yes? Could, can you help weigh in on this one for us?
His phone's probably muted, like his proper answer is on.
Okay.
But it's not.
So you may be muted right now, Mr. Lustig, we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, okay, there you are, can hear you fine.
Okay, so, um, I'm having some difficulties here. Did, was it the consultant who made the comments about bringing things back, and that it would be premature, uh, at this stage, um, to proceed in that fashion? Is that, was that the consultant?
Yeah, Ms. Martel, yes.
Yes, so through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, what we're, what I'm suggesting is, we're at the public meeting stage, we're at the statutory public meeting, we're here to receive public comments. We have had a number of conversations with Mr. Brady about his client's property, and as I had noted previously, uh, the deferral at this time was identified as a result of the region being at a certain stage at their MCR, when we were drafting our report and drafting our amendment, where the community area land need had not yet been identified. So as Mr. Hrlavich noted, and as, um, Mr. Fisher noted, um, these lands we have identified are no longer appropriate for employment uses. However, because there are continued ongoing conversations at the region at this time, because we're at the public meeting stage and not at a recommendation stage, those conversations are ongoing and can certainly be resolved through receipt of comments and a few more conversations, and brought back forward at a final recommendation stage, um, when at that time, that deferral could be addressed. But at this stage, like, we're at a public meeting to receive information and comment, we're not at a stage, based on my understanding, that we would be changing things right now. But, so my suggestion would be that if council has a desire for the consultants and staff to look at this... to look at this, that they would direct us to continue to have those conversations with Mr. Brady and his client to resolve the issue when we come back in the fall.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify what my question was? I understood that. And my question to you, through you to Mr. Lustig was, while I understand what she's telling me, those lands are not identified as employment lands. Mr. Vaca and Mr. Brady talked about that they are willing to go forward and apply at the city to start developing. I don't underst, can we legally take that out of the, that deferral out of this recommendation tonight? That was my question to you. I understand what she's saying, but do we have the authority to take that deferral out of the recommendation tonight?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I may have missed, sorry, I may have misled you. I agree with the consultant, given what she's just said about the timing and the discussions. I think it would be premature and unsafe to do it at this stage. I think I would allow those discussions to take place and not do it tonight.
Then, Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw my motion. I don't want, I don't want us to do anything that will affect either the developer and/or the study.
Okay. Okay, so then the motion, Mr. Clerk, is that we receive the comments of the public and refer this to staff for the official plan and zoning bylaw amendments? Is that our next, is that the motion we're looking for?
Yeah.
So moved.
That's the recommendation in the report.
Okay, so that's moved by Counselor Anoni, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that we refer, that we receive all the comments from tonight and the other ones that we've received through email and otherwise, and that get forwarded to our staff and our consultants to come back in preparation of official plan and zoning bylaw amendments. All right, so we've got that. Yes, Counselor Carrio?
Well, Your Worship, and I hope that, that we don't get a carbon copy of what we've seen tonight when it comes back, because I think that this Council's made it loud and clear, that we don't like a lot of the things that we've seen. So if it comes back with the deferral in it, and the other things that address a lot of those other properties, you better put a two-day time aside for the next meeting, because we'll be here a long time.
Okay, so I think those are comments, and I think everybody heard those comments. So I appreciate that. So if there's no further comments at this point, let's call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And that is unanimous. All right, thank you very much for that. Thank you to all the consultants. Thank you to staff. I know there was a lot of work, and it was a long part of the meeting. So thank you to everybody for being patient with our technology challenges. So we'll just take a moment and call in Counselors LaCoco and Peter Angelo, and here they are. That was quick.
That was quick.
That was quick, yeah, thank you. We didn't have too many speakers. I think there's three people left in the city that didn't speak on that one. All right, I'm going to reach out and ask our clerk, Mr. Mattson, to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
Public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit four, four-story apartment buildings with a total of 80 dwelling units on Block 116, west side of Garner Road, south of McLeod Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, June 18th, 2021, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment, to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall give notice to the city clerk immediately after today's public meeting.
Hey, thank you very much for that. I'll now ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hurlovich, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me. The property, property in question is on the west side of Garner Road, south of McLeod Road. It's highlighted in the screen in blue. The intent is for these lands to change the zoning to allow four, four-story apartment buildings. The property has an area of 1.09 hectares, 2.69 acres. To the north are light industrial and detached dwelling uses. Street townhouses are proposed to the west, and there are vacant residential lots proposed to the south. Light industrial and wooded areas to the east. The proposal is to change the zoning from R4 with special provisions, the R4 is an apartment townhouse zone, to an R5B zone, which would permit apartment buildings with special provisions to allow a height of 14.5 meters, which would accommodate the four-story buildings proposed, and to allow four apartment buildings to be placed on the site, and those buildings are illustrated on the drawing and in fact comply with the balance of the R5B zoning. Parking would be provided in the center of the property as surface parking. The elevations of the building are basically a combination of modern elevations with traditional hip roof for the buildings. The applicant is requesting, as I said, the R5B zone with site-specific regulations. There was a neighborhood open house held on June 16th. No neighbors participated. We did examine the property relative to provincial policy statements. The requirement is that they meet a minimum target density of 50 people and jobs per hectare. This proposal will achieve a density of approximately 187 people and jobs per hectare. So that's well above the requirement, and it will help accommodate the overall 56 people and jobs per hectare required by the Garner Secondary Plan. We examined the property for official plan policies, and we found that the application is in conformity with provincial policies and provincial plans. The proposed development will achieve 187 people and jobs. I mentioned that already on the page. So the official plan, Garner Secondary Plan allows 50 to 75 units per hectare. This development has 73.39 units per hectare, represents an efficient urban land use, and is located on an agricultural road. With respect to the zoning bylaw, the R5B zone allows apartments. It's already zoned R4, which would allow apartments, so they're looking for additional height and, and to ensure that they can have four buildings. There are larger setbacks on the property than the zoning would require, and that accommodates the height. The proposal would be subject to site plan control to address site issues, and therefore we found that the proposal is consistent and complies with provincial policies. It's in conformity with the city's official plan and secondary plan, and the requested zoning will assist in providing housing choices in the community. The recommendation, therefore, is that Council approve the zoning bylaw amendment application to rezone the site to site-specific residential R5B zone to permit four-story apartment buildings with 80 dwelling units, subject to the regulations outlined in the report. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. Do we have any questions of Council for Mr. Hurlovich? No? Okay, that was good. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to notify the city clerk to preserve their opportunity to appeal will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Do we have anyone here other than the applicant?
The only person we have on the list to speak would be somebody from, Mr. Ethan Laman from Junior Planner. He's from Upper Canada Consultants.
Okay, so then he'd probably be in favor of, okay?
Yeah, he'd be the applicant, so.
Okay.
There's nobody else on the list for this one.
All right, so then, since there is nobody other than the applicant, we will go to the applicant, and I'm guessing Ethan Laman? Are you online?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. I do have a short communication I'd like to share. I don't know if I have, you know, you can do that here, or if Cork has to do that.
Yes, just one moment, please. We'll reconnect you.
Okay, we're going to reconnect you.
Okay.
Your Worship, perhaps a pause, so we can just answer questions if we have questions.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you hear that?
Yeah, can everybody hear me still?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. So I think our Director of Planning did a great job, so I don't know if there's anything that you need to add other than what he did?
Yeah, you know what? If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I'll have my presentation available if there's anything that you would like to go over, but if you're happy to make a recommendation, then I'm happy with that as well.
Yeah, okay, well, why don't we do this? Let's get a feel for Council. Do we have any questions specifically to this development for Mr. Laman?
No questions.
Okay, no questions. Okay, so I'll tell you what then. Since there are no questions, you can hang on to that. The public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Counselor Thompson, are you moving the recommendation then, staff's recommendation? And that's that we approve the zoning bylaw amendment application to rezone the land a site-specific residential apartment, 5B density, R5B zone to permit four, four-story apartment buildings with a total of 80 dwelling units, subject to the regulations outlined in this report, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Is there any discussions to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. So, Mr. Laman, thank you. Appreciate you being here, just in case we had questions.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Give us a second here. Moving on to, excuse me. A second. Okay, moving on to reports. So we've got F 2021-39, Report and Statements for 2018 Consolidated Financial Statements for Information of Council. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we receive the reports. All those in favor? Okay, and that's online. Counselor Anoni, you're good too? Yep, okay, that's approved, thank you. Item 8.2, F 2021-40, Grow Grant Request for Property Tax Forgiveness. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. As Chair of the Homeless Committee, which is far more than just homeless, it's dealing with mental health and a whole slew of other problems. Poverty. Project Share, Out of the Cold, those are downstream solutions to the problems that we're looking at. We need to move upstream, and I think we've moved upstream with respect to the homeless with the old library at the end of Armory Street and our agreement with the region. We spent over a million dollars to, to make the land on Park Street environmentally friendly. This Grow operation is upstream. They started off apparently with something like 25 individuals. They've been up to 450. There's nobody that works there for a salary. I can't help believe, based on my personal experience in attending the operation, that we, the city of Niagara Falls, can't help these people with the deferral of taxes. And I would make a motion that we send, report, report back to staff and ask them, direct them to reverse the track, or deal with the tax, deal with the tax situation.
Okay, and approve the grant request.
And approve the grant request, yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor LaCoco. No? Oh, you got a question? Okay, seconded by Counselor Dobrowski, that we approve the grant request for Grow. We've got a question by Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past year, I've talked with Pam Farrell at Grow, and I've talked to some of her clients, and they really feel it's a great program. I completely support the program. The challenge I'm having is the deferral of taxes, not the deferral, the removal of taxes, and grants. As a council, we said that we were not accepting any new grants or fee for services, and once you get into property taxes, it's a very slippery slope as well. I did speak with Pam, and I gave her a lot of information about other types of grants to look towards. I'm talking with Project Share to help them look for grants as well. I completely support everything that they're doing, but I can't support the tax removal on this particular one, because it is a slippery slope. I'll support them any other way, if there's other ways within the city that we can look at money that could be in place of that, so let's not call it taxes, let's do something else. But there's been many times this year we have denied other fees for services, other grants, and I can't see us accepting this one when we've denied other ones. We have another one coming up on our agenda about the CIP, because they missed the deadline. Same type of idea. If we do have rules, we do have to follow them, but can we be creative and try to find money somewhere else for them? As I said, I'm trying to help them, but I can't support this, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any other speakers to the motion? Counselor Strange?
Yeah, just to add on to, well, not add on, to reiterate what Counselor Campbell says, they have so many, not employees, volunteers, I guess, there, helping out with a great program. So I agree with Counselor Campbell that they need some help, and I'll be in favor of the motion.
Thank you for that. Well, if there's no further comments, let's call the vote. All those in favor and opposed. Okay? Okay, two opposed. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Council members. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to item 8.3. We've got a request to City Council to consider downtown CIP revitalization grant for 4635 Queen Street. Let me just, 8.3. And we, but we do have the, so I see in my notes, John DeLuca is, they're on, but not necessarily going to speak? Is that right? Do I have that right, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct. I believe we may have Chris Sinclair, the owner of the property, that's prepared to speak to the matter.
Okay, great, great. Thank you for that. Mr. Sinclair, are you there? Yep, Mr. Sinclair, are you there?
Mr. Perry is unmuted.
Okay. We cannot hear you, Mr. Sinclair. They're telling us you are unmuted, but we're not hearing you. I don't know if you can hear us?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, there you are. We can hear you now.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, that's great. Welcome, welcome to the call. So, or welcome to the call, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the floor is yours.
Awesome, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of Council. My name is Chris Sinclair. I'm co-owner of Brand Boulevard, a promotional merchandise firm right here in Niagara. I, alongside my partners, are the co-owners of 4635 Queen Street, now known as the Dominion Building. We purchased 4635 Queen with the intentions of revitalizing a forgotten building in downtown Niagara Falls. With heart and vigor excited to be our anchor tenant, we were then able to secure Wonder Bud's cannabis as a tenant in the fall of 2020. Final piece of our development was to double the existing floor plan of the third unit, adding a second level, allowing for over 4,000 square feet of modern office space. After purchasing the building, we moved quickly with upgrades. The exterior and facade helped unify the building, show that we were committed to invest. We checked off all the boxes for the grant, but were not able to wait for the application process, therefore not really doing things in order. However, in the spirit of this program, we feel we proved our commitment to update and unify over 15,000 square feet of commercial space. Like many others, we were greatly impacted by closures of COVID-19, ran into significant delays with both construction and permits, as most things were not able to operate in a traditional manner. It was extremely difficult and stressful to handle the ongoing carrying costs and the opportunities of vacancies. We truly believe in the downtown and how important businesses like ours are to attract professionals to work, eat, sleep, and play. This is why, even with significant delays, we marched on with our commitment to invest over $2 million. We're excited We're excited to say that we received final occupancy permit and welcome our final tenants into the space. So, we understand the premise of the CIP program is to provide incentive to business owners. However, there is a disconnect between the incentive programs from the region and the city. The regional grants are applied for and accepted or denied after completion of a project, versus the city where you apply, then wait approval to build. Unfortunately, many of those who don't, or many of those who apply actually don't complete the work after approval. We feel not awarding us the CIP is punitive, because we did things out of order. All this said, we truly believe in this building, we're excited about the opportunities for downtown. It's why we're asking for council's consideration in this matter, in the hope that you allow us access to the CIP program as applied. We welcome you to come down, check out our exciting new space improvements made. Thanks very much for your time today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Do we have questions of council? Yes, Counselor Dobrowski?
No questions, I was gonna make a motion, but I want to congratulate Chris and his team for renovating a building down on Queen Street. Lots of great news happening on the street with the rebranding of downtown Niagara Falls, so welcome addition to the downtown, and hopefully after I make a motion, we can, we can get things moving forward.
Go ahead, if you've got a motion, you can put it on, and then we'll have discussion once motion's on the floor.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we don't support staff's recommendation, and that we approve the CIP request.
Okay, moved by Counselor Dobrowski, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Counselor Peter Angelo, you'd like to... Okay, okay, great. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This sort of goes back to what I was just speaking about. I know at the last meeting, we were talking about that there are many, many businesses that want to improve themselves, but there is a process, and what they've done is wonderful. I completely give them credit. Thank you so much for coming to our community and doing that, but we do have rules for a reason, and I'm a stickler for rules, so I can't support, support approving this, so I would support the recommendation from staff to deny it, but I will not support the motion.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any other, yes, Counselor Dobrowski?
And just to that point, and the presenter had mentioned, and maybe there is a little bit of confusion in terms of what the region's providing, and what the municipality's providing, so maybe we could use this as a lesson learned, but maybe just looking back at how we can be more consistent, working with the region on providing information to potential applications.
Thank you for that. Counselor Strange?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I've got you next, Counselor. Counselor Strange?
Yeah, and I totally agree, and I didn't know that, that there was two different, I guess, CIPs through the region and the city, and they're not aligned. So, one is to do it before, and then get all the boxes checked, and one's to do it after, and check all the boxes. So, it's a little confusing. So, maybe we can get something that we're both in line with the region as well, so we have the same boxes checked at once.
And I know the region is doing a review of their CIP programs, that's coming up in the next coming meetings as well, as well. So, thank you for that. Counselor Iannoni?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, it's good to see them come into the downtown and invest money in there, and I'll support Counselor Dobrowski's motion. I just don't want to set a precedent on that. Like, whether, if the two are wonky, and they don't coincide with each other, let's work on getting that done, so that we have some sort of unified process that's both the same. But I'd hate to see us get a number of these that have already been done, and they're coming to us after the fact. If our rules are wrong, let's change them. If the regions are not aligned with ours, and it's wrong, maybe they can adapt to ours, but this whole process is a little bit screwy.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed, one opposed. Thank you for that. Moving on to 8.4. There are fee waiver applications, five of them in fact. Okay, motion by Counselor Carey, seconded by Counselor Strange to move the recommendation. Counselor LaCoco?
Conflict.
Okay, with a conflict, Mr. Clerk, for Counselor LaCoco? Okay? If there's no further discussion on that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay? And, okay, and opposed? And none opposed? Okay, so that's 8.4, approved unanimously. Item 8.5, Request by the Downtown BIA to Apply Community Improvement Area Funds to Other Works. Specifically, I believe it's the painting of the archways. So, I've got Counselor...
Conflict, Mr. Mayor. Should I leave? Are there going to be discussions?
I think you're fine. I think you're fine for that. Counselor Dobrowski, you had your hand up?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Iannoni? We've got Counselor Dobrowski's got the floor. Did you want to speak?
No, I just wanted you to see my hand was up, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so the report mentions a few times that the proposed work isn't necessary, and I might agree with it, if we're looking at this as just a paint job, but I'm looking at this as more of a rebranding, an economic development initiative. The downtown's put a ton of work into rebranding with new websites, ton of new businesses have opened up on the street as well. I remember back in the early 2000s, working with two of Ontario's largest credit unions, and they merged, and we went through a whole PR and marketing and rebranding campaign, and the one piece that they didn't update was their headquarters building and their signage out front. It was highly visible on the QEW, and every time I drove past it, I just, I looked at it, it was kind of, you know, unprofessional, you know, for lack of better words, but I like to see the queue be removed from any mention, not only in the marketing materials, which the BIA's done a great job of, like I said, rebranding the website, and rebranding Letterhead and whatnot, but we gotta get rid of that queue, and we have to move forward, and part of doing that would be using the CIP towards the paint job, but more importantly, removing the queue from the downtown and getting them rebranded, making sure that we're putting their best foot forward for potential investors and developers coming in. So, I'd like to make a motion that we, again, I hate to go against staff's recommendation, but, but grant the BIA's request of that $30,000, and get those arches repainted, get that queue removed, and get that moving forward. So, I'll leave that motion on the floor.
Okay, motion by Counselor Dobrowski, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Do we have any discussion? Yeah, Counselor Iannoni?
These arches make me twitch. I feel like I'm in a bad nightmare, and they've come back again. They were, I was very public in speaking out against them at the first time, colossal waste of money. They were supposed to bring a plethora of visitors flooding the downtown, and that didn't happen either. When I've listened over and over again to the comments, you know, "Let's not do the same things we did before, let's change the way we're doing things," you just increased the levy by almost 100%. Use your levy money, do not use public tax money for something that didn't work in the first place. You want to paint your arches, paint your arches, but you've already levied them to death, and now we're gonna use public money for arches. I think it's a colossal waste, and I think they have the money to do it. Maybe we should ask them to show us whether or not they have the money to do it. Is there a need for the taxpayers to be paying for this again? Because I don't think there is. I think their levy that is crushing the business owners now should be paid.
Okay, sorry, part of that kind of cut out a little bit. Okay, I've got you as opposed to that. Do we have any other speakers to the, to the motion? Okay, Counselor Strange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think with all the work that has been done by the current BIA to improve the downtown, and even you look at the CIP that we just approved, everyone's putting a lot of work, and the zoning amendments that are happening downtown as well, I think this is a good ad, and starting fresh and starting new, so I'm obviously in support of this.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, if there's no further speakers, then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and opposed? Okay, one opposed, and one conflict. Okay, item 8.6. Okay, move the recommendation that council allocate capital budget funds for the scrubber. Moved by Counselor Carey, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. There's no discussion to that. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? So, that's unanimous, right? That's unanimous? Okay. 8.7, Ad hoc Committee, Housing Committee. There's a recommendation that council direct staff to have concept drawings prepared for the Dunn Street Extension lands suitable for public consultation. Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. Any, just, sorry, I keep looking here, I got, I hate this thing, it's confusing. Any other discussion? Anyone else want to speak to this?
Is there any notification of the properties in the area before?
Who'd we go to for that? Would we go to the Chair or Mr. Hrlavich on that question? Counselor Thompson, is there any notification of properties in the area?
Mr. Mayor, I walk that three times a day, and they have not been notified.
Thank you. Okay, so, no, they haven't yet, but they will. Yeah. Right. Yep, yeah, Counselor Peter Angelo, good idea.
Thanks, Your Worship. I guess I'll just give a little bit of background. So, I did have one meeting with staff. Mr. Nickel, Mr. Hrlavich, and also Mr. Felicetti was there. Mr. Nickel provided some good insight. I think, you know, the first step was to see whether or not there was any underground services. As it says in the report, Part II of the lands, which is the centerpiece, has services underneath, so until it's determined where it is and how much of the land is usable, staff are recommending right now to just leave those lands out. The other two parts of the land, which would be from Kaler to Pitten, and I believe from, is it Charnwood? Yes, Charnwood East. Those lands there don't have any underground services, so if council chooses to use those lands, then the next step would be to have staff come back with some drawings and what could possibly be placed on those lands. If council then likes the drawings, then you start the public process. So, has the public been notified? No, because there's no drawings yet. I mean, it's an idea that's been brought forward to council. If council likes the idea, then they can choose to move forward on it. So, there are opportunities, Your Worship, especially on Kaler Road, seeing as there's a co-op right next to the lands, so the land that the city owns on Kaler Road can instantly be merged with that co-op. I would suggest that, you know, staff have some discussions with that co-op to see whether or not they're interested in that. That would make the most sense, from, I guess, an affordable housing standpoint, and then whatever council decides to do with the balance of the lands is their decision, but the recommendation's in front of you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that. Yes, Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at this, I think it's a great idea that we start looking at affordable housing and homeownership in our community, but when I looked at the report, I was a little bit concerned with, it's down to 50% of usable lands, and the tree, the tree studies are really bothering me. Each part has trees on it, and we'd have to do a tree study, so I'm concerned about the tree study, I'm concerned about the 50%. So, I guess my question is, have we looked at other lands? I sort of feel like we're trying to push a square peg in a round hole. I did a quick search on Niagara Falls Viewer, and I searched for properties over 50,000 square feet, and just to my blind eye, I know they have to be vetted, but there's probably over 60 properties that we can be looking at, so I'm wondering, before we put time and money and energy into one property that might not work per the report, I'm wondering if we've looked at other properties as well.
Well, I think I'd ask Counselor Peter Angelo maybe to let us know, I mean, I know you mentioned there's lots of properties, but I don't know, are they municipally-owned properties?
Yes, I went through all the municipal properties, over 50,000 square feet, based on the parts that were in this report, but again, I would expect staff to help weed through them, what is available, what's not, why we wouldn't use this one, why we would use this one. There are, there were 611 city-owned properties, so when you start weeding through it and filtering them, as I said, there's probably over 60, all throughout the community in different places, and I'm just wondering if there's a better fit, because I'm looking at this, and I don't know if it's the best fit. So, I'm just wondering, before we spend all of the time on this property, should we be looking at other properties?
So, I would just pause it back, Counselor Peter Angelo, if you just want to weigh in, and then I could get Mr. Hrlavich to...
I haven't looked at other properties myself, Your Worship.
Okay.
Okay, I would like us to spend time looking at the other properties, have staff do a cursory view of other properties, and if there's nothing, then let's put our time into this one, but if there are other properties that fit what we're looking to do better, I would prefer to do that, and I'm really concerned about the tree studies. I wouldn't want to go ahead and make all of these plans, and then get to the tree studies, and then figure out, oh, we can't cut them down, so I think the tree studies need to be addressed before we get into this.
Well, have those other properties you looked at, do we have trees on them?
That's what I don't know, I don't know what's on them, other than the square footage. I did look at that, and that they are owned by the city, so I would appreciate help from the staff to weed through them and figure out what would be usable. Might be nothing, and then we can move forward, but if there are...
Maybe we get some feedback from council on what you want to do, because I believe, Mr. Clerk, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
We do, okay. So, we do have a motion on the floor right now, so discussion to the motion. So, I've got Counselor Iannoni, then Thompson and Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Chair of the Committee. Lori asked, have we looked at any other properties? So, I get, and I didn't hear him answer her, so did, has he looked at any other property?
No, he did, he did answer. He said that, he had, he said that he has not looked at other properties.
Okay, so I, somebody sent me the clip of you on CHCH, talking about how this was sitting just under our noses, and how we were looking at this as affordable housing. So, this is what Counselor LaCoco and I've been trying to do for two years, and every time we've brought it to council, we've been told, this is not a city responsibility, it's regional. So, I contacted the region today, and I asked them a bunch of questions, because nobody's, first of all, the committee hasn't met, so I'm really surprised that Counselor Peter Angelo met with staff and didn't tell the committee, but what definition of affordable housing are we looking at using? That's the first thing I'd like to know.
Well, the first thing I should point out though, this is the committee, Counselors, so you didn't miss any meeting. This is the committee meeting, right now, it's a committee of council. That's why it's brought before all of us.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, what definition of affordable housing is the committee using?
Well, I think, and again, I don't want to speak for Counselor Peter Angelo, but I think right now he found some land that the city...
Well, I went through you to the Chair.
Okay.
I did address through you to the Chair.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, so your question is to...
And not, not being you, because the report says Counselor Peter Angelo would be chairing this.
Oh, okay. So, Counselor Peter...
Okay, so I just wanted to make, when I say through you to the Chair, I really did mean him.
I get it, okay, thank you.
Your Worship, the original motion of council, and I believe that Counselor Iannoni was the seconder to the motion, was that this particular property be looked at. There really wasn't any other specific details in terms of looking at other properties or expanding it. We kept saying that that would be a discussion that council would have, so, no, I'm not gonna go out and look at other properties unless council directs me to do so. I mean, it was a council motion to specifically look at this piece of property here. That's what we've done, and the report is back in front of us.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
So, Mr. Mayor, I want to talk about that, because we had asked at the time, I had, I think I had asked Mr. Todd, would we have to partner with the region? And he said yes, and there was, oh, we don't want to partner with the region, we want to lead this. So, the first question the region asked me today was, what definition of affordable housing is council looking at? Because that's very important in regards to look, and this was affordable housing, we've couched it that way the entire time. Is it going to be subsidized housing? Is it going to be homeownership? Because I believe all of those were listed in the pitch to council. And they said it would be very hard to find a developer to build without funding, and the funding comes through either the region or the feds. So, I feel we've kind of put the cart before the horse here. That's great, you found property that the city owns, but this report, right from Section 1, 2, and 3, none of it is very positive. Pretty much, it, I look at this as we've got a political response. Part 1 is not wide enough. Part 2 has construction under both the sanitary and sewer, both under the land. Part 3 east of Charnwood is partially treed. It's not partially treed, there's got to be 100 very mature 50-foot trees there. I walk it three times a day. So, it's probably the only green oasis in that whole subdivision. So, it seems to me that we're, if we're a council that really cares about affordable housing, are we looking for the best spot for affordable housing? Are we only looking for this spot? Through, and I understand what Counselor Peter Angelo is saying, council made a direction for this spot, but no other spot was... but no other spot was recommended. So I think it's great you found city land that we owned and was surplus, but there's a lot of city land that we owned in our surplus that would be much better than this. Every single solitary section of this says it's too narrow, each one. It, I don't, I walked it yesterday. I don't understand how you could put any development there that would be facing either the hydro, the hydro posts, which are the entire piece of property. They will either be in somebody's backyard or somebody's front yard. It is, it is a bad piece of property for this all the way around. The fact that we're doing this, then asking residents, I think is quite backwards also. I talked to some of them yesterday and they were shocked that we were even having this discussion today, they hadn't been notified. And I understand process, but it doesn't appear to me that we're open to total affordable housing outside of this spot. So, when I was also speaking to the region today, and I think this is just doing our homework. If we're, if we're really committed to doing affordable housing, then we really should know how we're supposed to be doing it. And it was explained to me that the average market rent in Niagara Falls, at minimum, is $900 for a studio basement, old yucky, yucky wasn't the word they used, I did, apartment. And that, and they said that would, that's almost impossible to find. So she said builders can't build or rent developments unless they rent out at a 150% over average market rent. And that it's almost impossible for any developer to do that without subsidy, and that the region was not aware of not even one affordable housing development built without subsidies. So I heard Mr. Vaca say common sense is not so common. And I heard Counselor Campbell say, we need all the information before making a decision. What we don't have is, can the city build affordable housing without going to the region and the feds? And are we putting the cart before the horse here without looking at all of our properties as opposed to one where it doesn't fit?
Okay, well, I don't know, those are questions, I'll direct it, well, that's back to the Chair, I guess, I don't...
Well, those are things that should have been discussed, presented to the committee so that we could talk about them.
This is the committee.
Hey, yeah, this is the committee, this is where you would talk about it, this is, yeah.
So, so we're talking about it and nobody has these statistics. If you're going to have an affordable housing committee, don't you think you should, this is why I said we need a, we need a mission statement and agendas and be able to follow some sort of, some sort of format. But we don't even know the information in front of us to build affordable housing. We just know the spot where we want to put it.
Okay, well, that's, I appreciate, that's part of your discussion, is part of this meeting that we're having, to talk about it, so, so those are...
Well, then I'm not, I'm not going to support this motion, because I don't think council has all the information. I know the region hasn't been contacted about this. I don't know if Counselor Peter Angelo had our staff or himself contacted the feds about this. The federal government did, did release a mere $10 million, better than nothing, but $10 million, there's a couple, I think it was last Thursday, for affordable housing. But those are projects that are shovel-ready, that can be completed from start to finish in 12 months. So, how are we going to do this? We're going to pay for conceptual drawings and we don't even know if we can build affordable housing without a partner.
Well, let's have the discussion, so...
We are having it. I pose that as a question.
Okay, so let's make that part of the discussion. I don't know, I don't know if I should be switching chairs with you, Counselor Peter Angelo, or what, because it's, if you're the Chair. But maybe, do we, we bring in Mr. Hurlovich to answer a few of these questions, but I'll bring it back to you.
Your Worship, it probably is good to ask staff. I mean, I don't have all the answers. What I brought to council simply was a piece of land, and I said, listen, the city owns this, can we use this for affordable housing? Council decided to create a committee and put me as the Chair, and we put all of council on this committee. There's no staff person that really is associated to it. I mean, Mr. Hurlovich has probably been the one who's been most associated to it, because he wrote the report. I think he's written a report, not saying that 50% of the lands are not usable, it's about 40%, but it still works out to three and a half acres. I mean, tell me where you have three and a half acres of clean land in the city. I don't know that we do. I mean, the recommendation is simply to get some drawings to see what can be built there. We don't know what the next steps are. I mean, if we want to find reasons to kill it, we can always find reasons to kill it. And we can always find reasons to go forward if we want. We're either serious about affordable housing, or we're not, so...
Mr. Mayor, do I still have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Because Counselor Peter Angelo didn't say one word about affordable housing in that. He doesn't have any idea on whether we can do affordable housing. He, and that's great, he found a piece of land, and that's great, you want to throw out affordable housing, but not one, and in Mr. Hurlovich's report, it doesn't say anything about if we can build affordable housing. It says whether you can build there or not. So let's not couch it as affordable housing if we can't build affordable housing. There are strict guidelines to be able to call something affordable housing. And, and we don't have, it's not in our report, Counselor Peter Angelo didn't speak on it, and, and quite frankly, we all want affordable housing, but in, while it was, oh, I think we could build affordable housing there, that's great, but if we can't, what's the point of paying for a conceptual drawing? How about we find out whether we can actually find a partner and/or funding and actually call it affordable housing before we choose this piece of property? And I agree with Counselor Peter Angelo, he doesn't know if there's three acres anywhere else, none of us do. Counselor LaCoco went on and found all those properties, I, the list of properties here are endless, there's 60 of them. There's Shirk, there's Bossett, there's all the areas out there. I don't have the list in front of me right now. But we have far more than this, on, this, this does not fit here. I don't know anybody who wants to live on the other side of a hydro pole, with that either immediately in their front yard or immediate in their backyard. And I don't know what report Counselor Peter Angelo is reading, because every section says it's too narrow. And I walked it, it's too narrow. So I don't know if anybody else went out and walked it. I mean, this is a big decision, and if we're going to get, and I then went back and looked at how we're working on Park Street and speaking to the region today, the region's working very closely with our staff to find the right criteria for a partner for Park Street. We aren't do, we haven't even done that yet, and we don't have the drawings for Park Street. Like, I'm confused.
Okay, well, Counselor Peter Angelo asked, you mentioned something about Shirk, Shirk Street, or Shirk Road, or something?
Well, there's, there's half a dozen or almost a dozen on Shirk. There's on Bossett. I, I'm just trying to remember the names off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
I think that's outside the urban boundaries, that's not maybe necessarily usable.
Mr. Mayor, my point is there's at least 60 that are the 50,000 and above. Why don't they come to us and we have a full discussion as a committee before we look at trying to stick it into a piece of land that I don't even think staff thinks should be there?
Okay, Mr. Hurlovich, did you, I'm going to come to you, then next I got Counselor Thompson, Carrio, Strange, and LaCoco. Mr. Hurlovich, did you want to just weigh in a little bit on this discussion on this piece of property?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, to the counselor's question about what is affordable, council received a report from Dillon Consulting in June, which outlined housing directions. And it basically said there were two areas where affordable housing was needed. Those earning less, those households earning less than 30,000, those would be subsidized, and those would be the kind of units we would partner with the region if we found, you know, a parcel. My suggestion would be the lands that I already identified in the report, they're zoned R4. They front onto Kaler Road, they're right next to a co-op project. And that could be developed with a 24-unit apartment building. Whether or not we partner with the co-op that's already there, with Bethlehem Place, with Kewanas. These are all, all organizations that have affordable housing projects in our city. So, you know, we need to know, hey, organization, are you interested in building 24 units and making them available as rental projects? We don't know, but that would be one level of affordability. The report says there's the Block Two, which is between Pitten and Charnwood, and it has services on it, so we're limited to a single-family dwelling lot, maybe a semi-detached lot. I think that the city has partnered with Habitat for Humanity before and provided lots. And Habitat for Humanity provides lots to families at an affordable level, but not necessarily at the same level I just mentioned partnering with the region. And that would probably be that other group of household income, which is between 35,000 and 85,000. So that would be the target areas that we would be looking for. So, again, then the other parts of Part One on the west side of Pitten are the Part Three, which is on Charnwood. You know, those could accommodate, at 100 feet wide, we can accommodate a road on one side, townhouses on the other side. And it would be, you know, can a developer build those houses, units, for an affordable price that would meet the market somewhere that could pay, who's, who earned somewhere between 35 and 85,000 dollars? So, that's what we're talking about in terms of income levels, who would be targeting for affordability. And those might be made available to a developer that would promise the city to make those available, either as rental or purchase units, if they can do it. If they can't do it, then, you know, we reexamine whether or not we proceed with those ones. But there are opportunities, and, you know, until we have some idea of what could happen, you know, I've just thrown out ideas, you know, and so what I wanted council to do was give me some ideas of what could happen. The last council meeting, I was asked to identify some of the constraints. 100 feet, yeah, you're limited in terms of your design, but does it mean you can't put housing there? Absolutely not, you can't fit housing. So, I'm not an architect. I can't draw up a plan for you and show how a building would fit on there. But I've looked at other site plans that we have in our office and see that some of those drawings would, could be accommodated on those lands. And so, there are opportunities. I've sent an email to Counselor LaCoco to ask her to share the 60 properties that she's identified. And absolutely, the mayor is correct. Shirk Road, Bossett Road, all of those lands are outside the urban boundary. It would not be an area where we'd be developing urban uses, and housing is an urban use. So, that's my input.
Mr. Mayor, do I still have the floor, because I think he was responding to me?
Yes, you do.
I sat on, I actually sat on the committee that built Bethlehem Place on Kaler Road, I was the council rep on that. We're doing this entirely backwards than the way we did it with that one. So I agree with you that there are a number of agencies out there we can partner with. We, we specifically had the conversation that we were doing it. That's where my confusion is. It was said that downstairs, it was said upstairs, we are doing it. So, my, my question to the region was, can we do it? It isn't, do we want to do it, do we know it needs to be done, can we do it? Yes, we can do it if we partner with something like Bethlehem Place. Bethlehem Place created their own, their own architectural drawings. They have their own rules on how things happen. We didn't dictate to them, they just came to us for approval after the fact. And, and I, and I think you were the planner then. That was very contentious, very contentious. Actually, I think Counselor Thompson was the mayor, I think, at the time, and we literally had to have people removed. So this isn't as easy as saying, we're going to have that done. I just want to make sure we're not doing this backwards and we're not trying to fit a piece of land, it on a piece of land, because that's the only piece of land put in front of us.
Okay.
If we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Thank you, thank you for that, Counselor. So I've got Counselor Thompson, Carrio, Strange, and LaCoco next.
Well, first of all, I think everybody's in favor of affordable housing. And when I saw this, I went out and had a look at the property, got out of my car and walked up. It's the half size of the Lynn Hurst properties, and there's totally treed. And I think this is procedure. I think we have to come up with the notification of all the people, what, 25 homes on Lynn Hurst, and tell them we're thinking of doing that. The property is only half the size of the other lots. The trees are all right out to the, and you're looking at the towers at the hydro. So, I don't want to make a decision tonight and then have 25 people screaming, yelling at us that we didn't know anything about this before. That's what could happen. I think we got to tell the people what we're doing and thinking, and then bring it back and deal with it.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Carrio, Strange, and LaCoco.
Thank you, Worship. Just a quick question, and then I'd like to make a comment. Does Mr. Hurlovich have any idea just what it would cost us to do a basic concept drawing of this?
Mr. Hurlovich? Do you have any idea of the basic cost or approximate cost for concept drawings?
Very preliminary.
Just preliminary?
I do not.
No.
Well, Your Worship, I've had a developer approach me who would love to do this project for us. He's asked if there was something that he could do for the city, he's heard about this project. And, and we didn't even ask, it was asked to me, and I said, well, I can't even talk about it, because we haven't got any idea what we could do with it yet. So, I think that all the ideas are good, I think we could look at other properties, but this, this one's here. If this is anything, it's like, one of the properties, I'd say, let's take an empty piece of land and turn it into a tax-producing piece of property, if it wasn't going to be a subsidized or affordable one. And I don't disagree that there's going to be others, we have to start somewhere. If this is very reasonable to get a preliminary concept drawing on this one, I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with looking at other ones either. I, I don't think we've ever said, we're just going to do one. Maybe we're going to give this one to someone, maybe give another one to someone else, maybe partner up with someone. I don't, I didn't think this was just a, one that we did that was the end of it. The other ideas could be explored at the same time that we are looking at, at this. I'd like to have an idea what the, the concept would cost. If there's an issue about the cost, maybe we could say, could we get a ballpark idea on what the concept drawings would cost to do this? And then have it brought back to us and look at maybe some of the others. To me, there's no end to what we could do, I, I don't think it's one or the other, could be 10, you know, anyway, that's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, do you make a motion that we defer this until the cost for that study comes back? And a list of the acceptable lands, or lands that we have surplus?
Okay, so Mr. Clerk, that's a deferral motion, is there a seconder to a deferral motion? Okay, Counselor LaCoco, so Mr. Clerk, can you just walk us through the procedure?
Well, we did have a motion on the floor, but with a motion for deferral, that's not up for debate, I suppose you could call the vote.
Okay, the motion for deferral, call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? So, that fails. Okay, so we're back to original, you still have the floor, Counselor Carrio?
Well, Your Worship, I, I'm not suggesting that, I didn't want to cut off debate, that's why I didn't support the deferral motion. It's Counselor Peter Angelo is chairing the, it's his committee. I just would like to hear it maybe come from him. Well, let's see if we could get a pri- Well, let's see if we could get a price or an idea. We're gonna, we're gonna want to get that anyways. Let anybody else that wants to talk, talk, but then maybe a motion to get a price on what concept drawings might cost us and come back and continue the discussion, continue this committee dialogue at another meeting. But I don't want to cut anybody off. That's why I didn't support the deferral.
Thank you for that. Counselor Strange, then LaCoco.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it was over, I don't know if everyone remembers, but it was over two years ago. The Counselor Peter Angelo said, why don't we look for land and try to partner up with the region for affordable housing? So we looked at land, we came up with Park Street. He actually came up with the old library as well for transitional housing, which we're doing great. You know what I mean? We're really, in the last couple of years, we've been really making some progress. And I've looked at land. There's nothing in the, in, actually, the, the urban boundary that you could actually build. There was one piece that I thought might be available behind the Buddha Center, but apparently we can't build there. But for, for Counselor Peter Angelo to find this piece of land, and then what can we build on it? Mr. Hurlovich said possibly an apartment. If that's the only thing we can build on it, it's worth it. It's worth it to help and affordable housing. We're going to delay the process now because we've got to find the right piece of land? We've had two years to find pieces of land, and this is what we've come up with. And we're looking at, and if, and if we have to, we will partner with the region or partner with developers like Counselor Peter Angelo said two years ago. That's the process that we're going to take. And I think an apartment building, if that was the only thing, and we, we had 20 units in an apartment building, I think that's what, what Alex Hurlovich said, that's great. You know what? We're, we're cracking a dent into this. And that's why, if we have to find little pieces, little parcels all over the city, then let's do it. Let's, let's do this, and let's do it in the right process. We are obviously going to let the people know and the neighbors know what we plan to do, but we don't even know what we're going to do as far as, we need that, that picture. And then we can approach and have a public meeting with, with people and the neighbors. But to delay process now and not help people who need housing? Now we're just delaying the process. We're defeating the purpose by even having this then. Let's go forward. Let's not move backwards. I'd love to hear some of Counselor Campbell's, if he's around, because I, because I'm sure he would approve this, and he was part of, part of the, that, to help that transitional housing as well on Victoria Avenue. So let's get progressive here. If, if that's what we're trying to do as a committee and this whole council as a committee, let's have that discussion. And if we have to partner with developers or if we have to partner with the region, we can make that happen. Let's just get this first process going first, whether it's a small development or a bigger development. We can make it work, just like Alex Hurlovich said.
Thank you for that. Counselor Strange, Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've all brought up a lot of good points, and I think we all have questions and different ideas about moving forward. The challenge was, there was a motion on the floor, so we had to either accept that motion or, or deny the motion, or vote opposed to the.
Or amend it.
Or amend it. But you don't do that without discussion, so it's really good that we've had discussions. And I wrote down the same thing that Counselor Cario said, is how long is it going to take and how much is it going to be for the, for the drawings? I think that's important. I would like to see something about the tree study, and I would like to look at other properties. It doesn't mean that I don't want to move forward with this one, but that was the motion on the floor, so I, if, if the mover is acceptable to friendly amendment is to put in, what Counselor Cario said about the, the drawings cost and how long? Tree study, what does that entail? Are, are we out of it before we even get into it? And look at other properties. So we can still move forward with this, but add some of the other thoughts that everybody else has brought up as well.
So why don't we go back to the mover, Counselor Peter Angelo? So you've been out there, and, and Mr. Hurlovich is obviously familiar with the property, so trees and all.
Yeah, your worship, just, just by way of process, and perhaps Mr. Hurlovich can comment after myself, but I think step number one really was to just determine whether or not the city would be able to use these lands. Okay? The middle portion right now, as you've heard Mr. Hurlovich say, and is in, as is in the report, has services underneath. So until it's determined where those services are and how much of that land is usable, Mr. Hurlovich says, well, you can probably get, you know, a semi-detached dwelling on either side that, that fronts onto the different streets. But the other two pieces of land are entirely usable. That was step number one. Step number two would be, well, what can actually be built on there? If council then likes what they see on what can actually be built on there, I think then you would probably spend the money on the tree study. Then if you like the concept drawings, then you would move forward to public meetings and see what the residents have to say. I mean, it is a process, and we're trying to follow a process, and we're trying not to really, I guess, spend money unnecessarily. So I, I wouldn't agree to doing a tree study before you even know what you can build on there. So that's why the motion is the way it is, your worship. And if Mr. Hurlovich wants to comment any further, he can.
Mr. Hurlovich, did you have any further comment on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to add to the counselor's comments.
Okay, and to the cost, the concept cost?
Yeah, your worship, and I don't know what the cost would be. I think Mr. Hurlovich just put it in there because, again, that's step number one, you know, so what can possibly be built on these lands? If council wants to, you know, find out what the cost is before you decide to move forward, I'm fine with that, you know? All the other stuff, though, I, I don't want to add cost to it until you know that you have a plan that you like and that you want to move forward with, you know? The only other part that I've had discussions with Mr. Hurlovich about is, is the co-op on Kaler Road. I think that one is very interesting because there's definitely some synergies that can be had there. Like, I know Mr. Hurlovich has put in his report that you can build 24 units. That's based on the entire size of, of the parcel of land that's there right now. However, if that parcel of land ends up getting connected to the co-op next to it, you no longer have to build a driveway, you no longer have to build a lot of your parking spaces because that already exists on the co-op next to it. So therefore, that 24 units goes up in terms of number of units. So that's an interesting, that's an interesting, I, I guess, conversation that I think staff should be having with the co-op next, next to the lands that the city owns on Kaler. So those are my comments.
Okay. So we've got, now, we've got the motion, so the only question, I guess, that we'll, that we could just address, because I think we'll get a couple people if, to support it if they know that we're going to come back with the cost.
You could put an upset limit, your worship. I mean, Mr. Hurlovich has to have some idea.
Yeah. So Mr. Hurlovich, can you, like, do you have a, can we say up to? Is there a certain number? Because we thought maybe you'd have some insight into that.
I'm afraid I don't have any insight into that. No. No. I, I would be, be suggesting they would be very conceptual, so in order to keep the costs down. So a box to represent a dwelling unit, a, you know, driveway to represent the access to those dwelling units, as opposed to drawing out floor plans and landscape plans and so on. Basically, we want to know, you know, I said 24 units on the property that the Counselor Peter Angelo was just referring to. How would that look? You know, would it look different if it was combined with the co-op next door? If it just sits as an independent, how do we provide the driveway? How do we, so just very conceptual, conceptual concepts.
Okay.
So we're talking like over 100, 35,000?
Yeah, like 5, 10,000, like even a ballpark. Can, can we, well, if you give an upset limit for something like this, what, can you, can we quantify it?
I'm going to say it could be somewhere like, you know, 1,000, 200, $1,200 per property. So we, our four is one, the east half of part two, I'll skip, or sorry, east half of part one, skip part two because those are just single detached lots or semi-detached lots. That's easy enough for a concept. And so probably looking at 3,500, $4,000.
So for up.
Put that in the motion as an upset limit or not?
5, 5,000, round it up, right? Give it, okay. Okay, so the motion's including the upset limit of $5,000 to create the concept drawings. So I've got Counselor Inoni, LaCoco, and, okay, and the mover and the second are good with that. Counselor Inoni.
You just, you just asked him, first he said three times he couldn't tell you, and now we've come to an upset amount. Is there a reason why we can't wait until the next meeting to get an actual amount? The actual available properties? Staff or Counselor Peter or Angelo actually finding out how we would designate it affordable housing? How would we would get the funding? How a developer would do that? We, we're doing this totally backwards than the way we did Park Street? And, and I'm, I'm listening to Counselor Strange say, how are we going to put this off? You, you guys did that when we came back from Austin. We handed you an entire plan, entire ideas, and we were told that it was not a city responsibility. So to say that we want to put off something is, is asinine. We just want to do it right. So I, I'm not going to support the motion. I don't think we should be voting for any drawings until we know whether this is the right property. And just so that I can give council a, a comment on one of the neighbors who spoke to me, they said, what, you guys are not going to be happy until there's not one piece of green space, that everything is going to be paved over to be development? I'm not even going to have that conversation with them. We don't even know if we can build affordable housing. You know that we could sever that property, sell it to a developer, and have them build. But whether we can successfully build as a city affordable housing without partnering or handing it over to the region, we don't even know. And you don't know because I've asked the question. So shouldn't we find those things out first?
Okay, so I think we've got a motion. You're going to be opposed to it. Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we all want affordable housing, and I'm willing to support the motion if the mover would add to, talk to the region about affordable housing and what, what the process is and how we go about it, and to look at other properties. I'm fine with the, the up amount for the drawings, moving forward with them, but to add those two things, and then I think if they would do that.
Okay, we'll go to the mover.
Mr. Mayor, if they could also talk to the federal government, because there's money available there too. So if she, if you could add also to the federal government, I could support this motion. I want to make sure that it can be funded and that we can do it.
Counselor Peter Angelo.
I'm happy to add that, your worship, to be honest with you. And I also think that staff should have the ability to talk to the co-op who is directly north of the said property that we're looking at, because as myself and Mr. Hurlovich have already mentioned, there's incredible efficiencies to be had if you can do something with the co-op that already exists there. So I'm happy to add that.
Okay. Are you good with that for the second? Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. So, and I want to say, Counselor Peter Angelo, I, I want to say it's not easy, and congratulations on moving the ball forward. I mean, you, you identified the other property, the Carnegie Building, the old library, and this one too. So, I mean, let's see what we can do to move the ball forward. So that's great. Yes, couns, I didn't mean to demote you, Mr. Clerk.
Just before we move on throughout the, through the agenda to the consent agenda, I just ask if we could go back to 8.1 under reports, and this was a finance report on the 2018 consolidated financial statements. The recommendation in that report was just for the information of council. Staff have reached out to me during this meeting and would like to include a couple other recommendations that perhaps should have been a part of that report. So I will read them off, and if council has any questions, we could ask our acting director of finance to comment on that. Otherwise, we may just be able to call the vote on that. So further to report F 202139 on the 2008 consolidated financial statements, staff is recommending that council approve the draft audited financial statements for the year that ended December 31, 2018, as well as the 2018 draft post-audit letter and the 2018 draft management letter. I believe those are attachments that were to the report. The, the second recommendation also being that council receive the 2018 independence letter and 2018 pre-audit letter for council's consideration.
Okay. Who made the original motion? You did, I thought you did too. I think, easy now, one at a time. I think it was Counselor Peter Angelo made the motion. And who seconded? Was it Counselor Cario?
Thompson.
Counselor Thompson.
Your worship, so then just to reiterate the motion, the motion would be to approve attachments one, four, five, and to receive attachments two and three.
That sounds correct.
Okay. I'll move that, your worship.
Okay. Are you good with that for the second or two, Counselor Thompson?
I, as the residents are no.
No, no, we've been back to 8.1, 8.1 on the financial, the financial statements for 2018. We're just, we had to add, staff asked us to add a number of things that were in the attachments. So Counselor Peter Angelo just moved the, which were they? Can you say them one more time, Counselor Peter Angelo, the ones?
Yeah, your worship, there's five attachments there. So the motion now would be to approve attachments one, four, five, and to receive attachments two and three.
Okay. So it's the financial report, 8.1, and it's what Counselor Peter Angelo just said regarding the attachments. So two, four, five, I can't keep track of them all. So are you, are you good with seconding it once again? Okay. Okay, so let's take that vote again, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Great, thank you. All right, so now we're to consent agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we've got Counselor LaCoco, you want to lift something?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to lift 202138 and 39.
Okay, let's find.
38 was the heritage committee, and 39 was the residential front yard vegetables.
Okay, 202138, there it is. Okay, so you've got the floor.
Thank you. Just very quickly, I wanted to talk about the heritage committee. The heritage committee works for advancing restoration of original architectural details, and, and this grant assists in the costs in doing that. So for anybody who is interested in, in heritage features, please go on the website and check out all of the heritage properties that are listed. There's lots of information there, and this grant is very valuable in helping to achieve that. So I just wanted to mention that. And then for 39, the residential front yard, last time I brought up to see if we had any bylaws that would prohibit it. Apparently, we do not, so you can have vegetables, vegetable garden in your front yard as long as it's not enclosed. I just wanted to bring that up for the public.
As long as it's not enclosed, like in a greenhouse?
Yes, like it can't be a building, or yes, a greenhouse or something like that. If you had tomatoes and steaks and that sort of thing, but not an enclosed building.
Edible flowers.
Yes.
Good. Okay, that's great. And then did you want to deal with the next one while you're up? 39, 202139? Oh, that, that was the vegetable one, okay. So then can we move, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor LaCoco, that we move the consent agenda? All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you for that. Thank you. Got you, Counselor Inoni. And then moving on, let me just find where we are. Sorry. 10, okay, 10, here we go. 10.1. So we've got some communications here, the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority.
Receive, your worship.
Okay, motion to receive their information, second by Counselor, moved by Counselor Cario, second by Counselor Strange, sorry. All those in favor of receiving? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Item 10.2, Waynefleet MTO managing fragmites. Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think last year I spoke with Mr. Nickel about its fragmites, is how you say it.
Is it? It's funny, because I've heard both.
Yeah, I thought that.
I've heard both.
Well, the people I've been talking about it, they, they call it fragmites.
Okay.
So I did talk with Mr. Nickel about what the city is doing. I wonder if Mr. Nickel is here, if he could speak to let us know. I, I did send him an email, but I didn't hear back from him. If he could let us know what the city is doing and compare it to what Waynefleet is doing. It is a very invasive species, and it just eats everything, it eats all of the nutrients out of the soil. It eats all of the nutrients out of the soil, and then other things can't grow. So municipalities are doing different things. So if Mr. Nickel could let us know, that would be great.
Yeah, he was eating his KFC, so Mr. Nickel, if you could help us out here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd be happy to give a few words on phragmites. So unlike some of the agriculturally heavy communities like Waynefleet, phragmites really impacts more of our roadside drainage and some of our wetlands. It's an invasive species, and it primarily chokes out all the biodiversity in those wetlands. I had a good conversation with the Conservation Authority just recently, and we chatted about some of the challenges of phragmites. It has roots that grow down fourteen feet, and it's very, very difficult to remove. So the city is part of the Ontario Phragmites Working Group, so we regularly participate. And that's a great working group where we can learn from other municipalities on what challenges they've had. Some immediate measures that can be taken into consideration is just simply cleaning off some of our mowing equipment. So knowing that the equipment may be knocking down phragmites in, in roadside ditches, we don't want it to spread to other locations. We have done some physical removal in the Bain Powell Park back in 2017. That's the major extent of our work on phragmites thus far. But we do intend on doing some additional patrols and review in the field to, to determine where phragmites is a problem and where it may be proliferating. What we want to make sure we can do is, is control it. It spreads very quickly, and it's almost impossible to remove completely. It's a, it's definitely an Ontario-wide problem. For us, however, our efforts have been largely focused in urban areas, so we want to make sure that the phragmites are, are not impeding the flow of drainage in those urban areas that rely on rural drainage outlets. And unfortunately, we don't have the resources to go and eradicate it across the city right now, but we're working with those partners at the province, our working group, and the Conservation Authority really do damage control and to make sure that we do our part in control of the invasive species. The interesting thing I learned is that the Conservation Authority may be taking a more active role in phragmites management as their, the province is considering a bill amendment that will include that as part of the Conservation Authority's scope, but they'll need funding to make sure that they can make an impact in the region. So I hope that's a helpful update, Councillor, and thank you for bringing this up.
And I checked, it's, it's said both ways. Comes from a Greek term from a long time ago, I guess. So that's great. Does that, that helps? Okay, great.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So for the information, do you want to receive that report then, Councillor? Moved by Councillor La Coco, seconded by Councillor Strange that we receive the report. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Ten point three, Niagara Region Various Correspondence for the Information to Council? Yep, yep, oh, we've got Councillor La Coco's question?
Yes, I'll, I'll move it. I just want to bring notation to the average price of a house in the Niagara region is $532,400.
And going up twenty-five percent a year. Yeah, it's unbelievable what's happening right now with housing. Thus the shortage, right? And rental units and everything else, lots of challenges. So moved by Councillor La Coco that we receive the regional report, seconded by Councillor Dobrowski. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Ten point four, proclamation request, Residential School Remembrance Week. This will be for September 30th through October 7th. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Item ten point five, correspondence from Conmed Healthcare Group, Oakwood Manor, regarding their public consultation. The recommendation is for the information of council. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Dobrowski. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Request to change the street name Ryerson Crescent. Recommendation is council direct staff to initiate the process.
Move the recommendation.
Councillor Ianone, seconded by Councillor La Coco.
May I speak to that?
Yep, go ahead.
And I, and I want to thank staff for the quick response when I sent Mr. Hirlavich a letter. I had an opportunity to speak to Tabitha, and it's a very emotional issue, as we all know. And it was very emotional speaking to her. And I, I just want to thank everybody for being, not even questioning it, just knowing that it was the right thing to do, and for staff getting back to me so quickly. They very much appreciate it also.
Okay, thank you. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Item ten point seven, follow-up on the Ontario Truck Parking Study for the Information to Council. Okay, Councillor Kerrio, seconded by Councillor Thompson. All those in favor? That's approved. Ten point eight, final investigation report, Code of Conduct, Wilkins, Dobrowski. Councillor Kerrio? And then... Your Worship, is it public knowledge how much the report is? Um, I don't know. Could we, yes? Mr. Mattson, could you share that with us?
Yeah, through the mayor to the councillor, we just received a bill for that investigation totaling $8,300.
Are we getting a quantity discount? Do you know, Mr.? That one, it seems a little less than the others, but I just wanted to make note of...
I think it'd be safe to say that the Integrity Commissioner is a little surprised at the number of complaints that are being filed.
Yeah, I just thought that would be appropriate to let the residents and taxpayers know because we did make a, you know, some changes and know that these are coming in, and there's another, you know, almost $10,000 in, in fees that this is costing them. So thank you. Councillor Strange?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I read the report and the final investigation report. I just think it's ridiculous, you know? You get a resident that's just throwing spitballs at councillors and at the mayor, nothing's sticking. And then you get a councillor that's defending yourself and a couple of the councillors, and then he's just waiting for it. He's just waiting for someone to open up and saying, you're so and so and so and so. It's like, okay, I'm going to call Code of Conduct. Costs him 200 bucks, which he got back, but yet it costs the taxpayers $8,300. It's ridiculous, and I guess he gets his 200 bucks back, so we won't be able to recycle it through that same group that's using the 200. And now it's going to cost him 500 bucks. And if I think that, if this was a normal process, he would have lost his whole 500 bucks because it was frivolous, I believe. So...
Well, help me to understand too, if, as I read through the report, I don't know if the clerk can help us out or the solicitor, but it seemed to me that the Integrity Commissioner intonated that Wilkins never wrote the, the email. Is that the impression that we got from the report? That someone else wrote it? Someone else wrote this for him? It wasn't actually him who submitted? Someone just used his name and, and his person to submit a frivolous complaint that was dismissed by the Integrity Commissioner? So I just wondered, Mr. Clerk or Mr. Solicitor, if one of you could help us read into this?
I, I don't know that I know the full background on that, but I do believe that the applicant did file in person, if that helps at all.
Okay, Councillor Strange?
And, and it's, what's disturbing is that any resident can go out and call you, as he did, a POS mayor, and whatever us councillors, but we can't come back and say, oh, well, you know, you are this. Well, nope, I'm calling a code of conduct now. Because he's throwing everything, and you can't reply anything. Just let him do whatever he wants. Well, maybe he'll, he'll run for council and he'll be in that same stature, and that we can, we can wait till he, if he's going to run for council, I guess, have that same opportunity where he, he's not allowed to do the same thing back at us.
Well, I think that you're, you're right. And, and the outcome was that there was no Code of Conduct contravention, but it still cost the taxpayer $8,300. What a waste of time and a waste of money. I think it's disgusting that this is going on. I'm glad that we're changing some of our rules, and I hope that the Minister of Municipal Affairs is paying attention to what people are trying to do, and that they're going to make some changes really soon. So the recommendation is for the information of council. Motion by Councillor Peter Angelo. Need a second. Councillor Kerrio, that we receive the report. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Item ten point nine.
Received.
Okay. Received the regional report on linking Niagara Transit Committee, seconded by Councillor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Item ten point ten, Ontario Ambismin's Report. There's a recommendation that council receive the report from the Ambismin Office, that all resolutions passed by council or its committees be done at a time whereby the public are able to observe the process, and that this include the recording and broadcasting of such during any open portion of the council meeting, including passing of the resolution to go in camera. Councillor Strange? Okay, to receive, seconded by Councillor Kerrio. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that. Item ten eleven, correspondence from the Honorable Sylvia Jones Solicitor General. Recommendation for information to council. Motion by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Strange, that we receive the information. Of course, the information reiterates the fact that you don't leave animals inside of cars locked up cold or, or hot. Call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Resolutions, Mr. Clerk? Are there any resolutions? None? Okay. Ratification of in-camera, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Worship, council met earlier this afternoon for an in-camera meeting. Out of that meeting, it's to be ratified that direction be given to staff regarding the security of the property of the municipality, as well as council authorize staff to obtain additional insurance coverage for a total premium increase of $35,000. And also that council accept the offer to purchase Part 12 on reference plan 59R 16783 for a purchase price of $178,875 plus HST within the Montrose Business Park.
Okay, motion moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Strange to ratify the in-camera. All those in favor? That's approved. Bylaws? Councillor Peter Angelo makes the motion to introduce the bylaws of first and second reading, and third reading. Councillor Thompson seconds it. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. New business? Councillor La Coco? Councillor Kerrio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Dobrowski?
There was a recent post on social media about Niagara and the Lake having a 24/7 hotline for short-term rentals. So I, I talked to our, our staff to find out what the process was for here. So I have an email here. So our bylaw staff can reach, be reached until 8:30 PM by phone at 905-356-7521, extension 4341, or 4253, or by email at the building complaints. And the building complaint email is monitored seven days a week, 8:30 AM to 8, 8:30 PM. And it's building complaint at niagarafalls.ca. A lot of people were asking what to do. We have that information, but the residents, they don't have it. So that's why I wanted to put it out there. And I was wondering if we could maybe put that out on social media so our residents could see the phone number and the email, so they have that?
Want to make that a motion, Councillor?
Yes, I will.
Motion by Councillor La Coco, seconded by somebody? Councillor Kerrio, that through social media we promote the after-hours bylaw for, what do you call, vacation rental?
Vacation rentals, short-term rentals, VRUs.
Yeah, issues.
Yes.
All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that.
Okay, and the other, the last thing I had was on 7.1 Employment Lands, I also wanted to add, we put in the, the Go Station Bridge Street in the Employment Lands, and it wasn't in the first one. I live in that area, so I also want to put that on the record that it's, that I live in there. So that was also my conflict.
Mr. Clerk, you've, you got that? Okay, yeah, thanks for bringing that forward, Councillor?
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Kerrio, then Dobrowski?
Thank you, Worship. Your Worship, I don't know if anybody else checked this out, but during the course of the meeting, I know it was very difficult to tear myself away for a few minutes, but I checked the, the case count for the region, regional municipality of Niagara. Today, Your Worship, one.
Wow.
Today, we have one case. And I think, you know, the council should be congratulating the people of our municipality and of the region, because I think that everybody is doing, you know, what most of us don't want to do, go and get a vaccination, keep safe, wear masks, do whatever we have to do to keep our people safe. But we're doing it, and it's paying off. So, you know, everyone can't get a vaccination, so they still have to mask. They may have to mask for who knows how long, but obviously, we're doing something right. We've taken a bad situation, and we've got people coming to our municipality. You know, things are opening up, the numbers are still going down, and today, we're at one, which is an amazing accomplishment for all of us.
Wow, that's huge. It's been single digits for quite a while now, too. Consistently, yeah, no, not low, not one. Let's go for zero. We need zero. Yeah. Councillor Dobrowski?
Yeah, that's great news. I'm not sure what they reported across the province today, but I know yesterday was under 100 with one death, so moving in the right direction. Wanted to bring up, I've received a couple of emails. Spoke to a few residents as well over on Thorold Townline Road. There's some safety concerns down on Townline Road, and I know there's been some measures that have put into place a speed reduction from 80 to 60, I think towards Lundys Lane, the Thorold Stone Road, which still leaves a speed limit of 80 kilometers an hour on other stretches of road on Thorold Townline Road. Additionally, where McLeod Road meets Thorold Townline Road, there's only a single stop sign, believe it or not, on a road that's 80 kilometers an hour speed limit, a single stop sign. And I think the residents would benefit from maybe an all-way stop or a three-way stop on that section of road as well. There's a ton of new development over on McLeod Road, the new Costco, new UPS station as well. And people are even having difficulty reversing out of their driveways safely from, from their residents. And even Canada Post, believe it or not, has eliminated delivery to those homes on, on Townline Road. So a ton of safety concerns. And to that end, I like to make a motion, I've written it out here, that, that we request that staff ask the region to consider two, two points that I'll bring up, two safety measures over on Thorold Townline Road. The first would be to install a three-way stop at Thorold Townline Road and McLeod Road. And the second part of the motion would be to reduce the speed limit from 80 to 60 kilometers an hour from Chipewa Creek Road to Lundys Lane to make it equivalent to be consistent with the speed reduction that was made earlier from, from 80 to 60 on Thorold Townline Road between the Lundys Lane and Thorold Stone Road.
Okay. Motion by Councillor Dobrowski, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Okay, that's great. And actually, I know Town of Thorold's been heavily involved in this too because they, they think it's something real bad's going to happen, the way things are going.
Yeah, knock on wood, hopefully that's not the case. And by the way, it's nice to meet in person. Just wanted to make that note. Great to see all the plexiglass here, so we're getting closer and closer to, to meeting in person. But although Zoom has gotten us by, not only in council but through our other lives and business ventures, but it's great to see everyone in person, and I think it's more efficient, and it's good to have some tone when you're looking face to face. But anyway, good to see you all.
You too. Who else? Any other new business? Motion for adjournment.[1776.62]